Good morning, everyone. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is September 16th, 2025, and it is 10:00 a.m. We'll start with a salute to the flag. Chief Eisenhagen, if you could please lead us in a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now do the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Chair Hill.
Here.
Vice Chair Herman.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
President.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Andriola.
Present.
Interim County Manager Kate Thomas.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mike Large.
Present.
And I'm Yvonne Strickland, Deputy Clerk.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into public comment. Manager Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment also limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole. Virtual public comment may be taken when facilities are available. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined under state law, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
First up is Erin Katz, followed by Judith Miller.
I can hear you.
Okay. My name's Erin Katz. I'm an Incline Village resident. I'm here to talk about IFGID's presentation. Why did they ask for this hearing today? What is it they intend to accomplish? They haven't told you anything about their financial state of affairs, and I've submitted a written statement I have to be attached at a minute of the meeting where I give a copy of a letter from the Department of Taxation. They're on fiscal watch. They can't handle their finances. This hands-off approach the county has to IFGID has to end. The county is our governance, not IFGID. We need protection, the residents. I'm asking here, protect us. So let's go back to the beginning. In October of 1965, the county held hearings under IFGID's request for public recreation powers. The father of Incline, Harold Tiller, gave testimony to the county. He represented, and it's in the letter I have attached to what I've asked for the board to review. He represented that if the county gave the district the basic power of public recreation, it would only be used to acquire and operate public parks and the beaches. And the funds that would be used to acquire and operate those facilities would be limited to IFGID's ad valorem taxes. All other contemplated recreation facilities would be privately owned and operated. It's right here in writing. Yet after securing this power on a divided three-to-two vote, IFGID immediately adopted its recreation tax, disingenuously called a fee, to pay for bonds whose proceeds were used to acquire the beaches. And since this artifice worked so well, it became the blueprint for everything we have today, which the district cannot afford, and it forces us to subsidize with this invalid tax. What I call this is IFGID lied to the county, and it's called fraud and inducement. And the remedy is criminal number one and rescission number two. Rescission meaning take away the power. And you have a means to do it. It's called a validation petition under NRS 43.100. Please instruct your attorneys to pursue this remedy for the protection of the local parcel owners in Incline Village. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judith Miller, followed by Teri Brooks. Ms. Miller has something to distribute to the board.
Thank you for requesting a financial update from IFGID. As you heard, IFGID's on fiscal watch and hasn't published any monthly financial reports in nearly a year. Until about two and a half years ago, there was little interest in monitoring financial performance or developing internal controls. Boards were told they were only there to set policy and provided no oversight. How has IFGID managed to operate this way for so long? We IFGID parcel owners are forced to subsidize a wide array of government-run businesses, even bars and restaurants. Most of these recreational venues don't even cover their operating expenses, let alone capital. To shore up these money-losing ventures and provide funds for any and all capital projects, IFGID invented a revenue source it calls facility fees. They're not standby fees, those stopped when a property connects. And they're not service fees. No specific service is provided to the property owner who pays. There's no mention of a facility fee anywhere in NRS. Where else are owners charged a fee, not taxes, on a property tax bill just for discounts for things they may never want or be able to use? There's no incentive to operate efficiently, since these unlimited and unrestricted fees paid by property owners are always available. The fees tripled, if you look at the bar chart, last year, from 450 to 1375, with just the vote of a board majority. Many questioned the increase, since the district had amassed huge fund balances after keeping facility fees collected for projects that were never pursued. These regressive fees unfairly burden those least able to afford them or to pay user fees for the high-end amenities they subsidize, like golf, skiing, dining out, and drinking. Something's wrong when, instead of low-cost public recreation, fees subsidize the resort lifestyle of others. Something's wrong when lower-valued properties and lower-income households pay more in taxes and fees than all the other tax-supported agencies combined. Oops, let's turn that. You got it. And as you see on the pie chart, unlike the ad valorem tax, there's no cap on facility fees. Since the county bills and collects them, you can and should question their validity. The only legal challenge I'm aware of was thrown out when the judge decided the taxpayer didn't have standing. We citizens have no remedy. IFGID's fees have all the earmarks of a tax. Please ask for a judicial determination under NRS 43.100 that the fees are valid.
It's required IFGID to do so.
Thank you. Teri Brooks, followed by Tracy Thomas.
It's me, Teri Brooks, again. And today I'd like to face the act of discrimination when it comes to economics and race. When people are discriminated against because of their race, they may not get to rent or buy a home just because of their race. So instead of renting or buying a home where they desired to live, they may wind up paying more for somewhere they didn't want to live. And when people are discriminated against because of their race, they may not get the education they wanted just because of their race. So instead of receiving their desired education, they wind up in frustration while seeking an occupation. When people are discriminated against because of their race, they may not get the job they want just because of their race. They may wind up with a low-paying job and have trouble paying their rent. That's another situation that they weren't able to prevent. And without a good job, they may not have health care. And being in that situation would be a difficult burden to bear. And that burden would be even worse if they find themselves in poor health, all because of discrimination that prevented their access to wealth. Some of these problems in the past were a result of bad politics, but some of the improvements in our times are results of good politics. It was bad politics that deprived some people of their rights, and later it was good politics that returned to people their rights. So in the past, discrimination also involved economics. And even today, the discrimination of the past has affected our present economics. If people were not discriminated against and had the chance to earn more money then, they would be more wealthy now from what they would have made from way back when. I would like to thank you all for listening to me again, and I look forward to coming back if I can afford more paper and a pen.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas, followed by Janet Butcher.
My apologies for missing the last meeting due to a family matter. I'm especially concerned because not one of you asked the important questions of the registrar's report. The complete absence of any of the issues in the summary former manager Brown provided you on March 26th about executive order 14248 dated March 25th. Are we going to have one ballot or two to ensure ballots for federal offices are not counted after Election Day? Are there any public announcements planned for IDs and documented proof of citizenship requirements for the federal office ballots? When are you going to cease giving lip service to transparency and integrity and honesty in our elections when you can't even report the data correctly? Slide five is false propaganda trying to brainwash the public into thinking that the majority of voters submit their ballots through the U.S. Postal Service. I know the Secretary of State wants to receive it in a manner that fits his political agenda. However, voters are entitled to the true data. The ballots are paper or digital. The slides in-person numbers must correctly report as digital ballots. The majority of voters want to submit a paper ballot, as is reflected on the slide as mail ballots. Washoe County suppresses voters' rights to uniform and standard ballot and a method of tabulating votes. The voter's only option to submit a paper ballot in person is dropping the paper ballot automatically mailed to them without request into a drop box at a polling location. This is still in-person voting. You have the numbers already documented. You are just failing to report them correctly. Yet not one of you asked how many ballots were received in the drop boxes or how many were received by postal service. That's what we want to know. The voting kiosks used in Carson provide the voter a little receipt with a number, date, and time they submitted their paper ballot into the tabulator. No one else has the info on that ticket. Just like a grocery receipt can be entered into a website with specific info and get a list of items on that receipt, voters should be able to enter their receipt number with the date, time, and/or store polling location number, and see the image of their ballot to have any confidence their ballot was not modified. No one else would have a combination of info in order to retrieve it. So it would still be a secret ballot. Lose the receipt, you're out of luck. You need to demand more from your vendors.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Michael Smith.
Please enter into the minutes President Trump's executive order 14287 of April 28, 2025, which details protecting American communities from criminal aliens. We have listened to those who are opposed to a grant to renovate the facility at the jail to better process those that are here illegally. I'm not sure why this group of people object to having illegals processed in an upgraded environment. It appears that this group of people are associated with indivisible. This group was established to provide left-of-center voters a practical guide for resisting the Trump agenda. This group of individuals have chastised the ICE agents for wearing masks. The agents are doxxed and feared not only for their lives, but those of their loved ones and friends. It is obvious, in the wake of September 10th, 2025 assassination of Charlie Kirk, why these agents wear masks. Charlie Kirk was a husband, father, son, friend, and believer in Jesus Christ who promoted open debate and dialogue. Whether you agreed with Charlie's views or not, Charlie went into the lion's den to promote this openness, to not only give a platform to conservative youth, but to hopefully give a different thought process to those who have been indoctrinated into believing that we are victims of oppression, and that they actually live in the greatest country on earth, a republic for which it was founded, and then should embrace the opportunities that they are given. Democrats cannot claim to be anti-gun when they are pro-assassination. We saw the outpouring, the nasty comments, the cheering. Democrats' euphoric celebrations over the assassination of Charlie Kirk have shown the world what the DNC's values truly are. Moving on to another subject, I am concerned about our local elections. They have not gotten any better. In recent months, there was an issue with cyber attack on our state. Now that our elections are being centralized, what is the contingency plan by the Secretary of State in case there is an issue on Election Day? And I want to remind and recognize that Constitution Day and Citizen Day, which is American federal observance, is every September 17th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Smith, followed by Lynette Cardnail.
My name is Michael Smith. It's my real name. If you have a hard time spelling it, go ahead and shorten it to Mike Smith. Regrettably, I've not attended these meetings recently, but I've had to kind of change and take thought about what this country means and my service for this country for 30 years as a Navy fighter pilot. This, however, means expressible thoughts and a commitment that I had to take pause and contemplate the reprehensible assassination of Charlie Kirk and what it represents for our country and the free speech. If this body individually or collectively has expressed condemnation, thank you. I may have missed it, and it's what it should be for local leaders. However, for those on the left that stay silent, or worse, post-celebratory, or hollow justification for their murder, assassination of Charlie Kirk clearly serves to expose the moral depravity and void intellect fueled by anger and its twin hatred. The vivid and horrific images of his murder easily stir our own but restrained and never justified angry emotions. Seeking guidance from Scripture and listening to Charlie Kirk's speeches, expression of faith has eradicated those emotions and allows us to lead and engage our family and hopefully our nation on a mission to bring us closer to Christ in our lives. Far too many have been shaken by this event that have held Charlie in high regard for his effective messaging and undoubtedly left justification for his assassination. Sadness will remain, and empathy for his family, friends, wife, and children will not abate anytime soon. Our prayers for healing will continue, and the emergent resolve to purge our country of this cultist liberal left and fanatical ideologies is going to strengthen. No longer will "take the high road" be necessary for conservative American principles is the high road. Retribution is not a path for this road, but rest assured that action is now the left lane. Any reference to fellow Americans will be suspect, as we have awakened to a dark and unfathomable reality that the political left is void of any American identity and is replaced by a foreign influence and/or domestically bred cult ideology. No longer can we echo the words of Ronald Reagan when he stated, "It isn't so much that liberals are ignorant, it's just that they know so many things that aren't so." Sadly, a new portrayal has emerged where it is that isn't liberals are ignorant, they're depraved, misled, indoctrinated, and consequently anti-American, void of empathy, compassion, humanity, honesty, civility, and faith. Retaliation is not in our nature, but we must and will focus our efforts to dismantle the corrupt liberal institutions that threaten American values and the future of our country. And in the words of a fighter pilot that only they can understand, "We're at the merge. Fight's on."
Lynette Cardnail, followed by Patricia Owens.
Good morning, trustees. I'm Lynette Cardnally, resident of Incline Village. Again, I come before you. Speaking about the rec fee and the fractured society and culture in which we find Incline Village. We are a community of second homeowners that come and go every six months, more or less, and full-time residents as well as renters, STR people that visit now and then, and our communication is very null, dim, and dismal. Again, we talk about truth being a reality according to the September 10th horrible assassination of Charlie Kirk, and I find that not as replicant of what's going on in Incline, but a diverse of it. It was disclosed through the trustees of Sarah Schmitz and Mike Dent that there is corruption within the Incline Village financials. We have found that out. We have the present board that ran on that, that they were going to help, but they are not. They are concerned with self-interest. We cannot afford rec fees being imposed on taxes. If that fee is a fee, then it's voluntary for me to pay, and I will get some substance or service from it, and I am not. Keep piling on rec fees to citizens that are holding up the financial corruption of Incline is not fair and corruption within itself. And so what you're going to hear in a few minutes, I call a dog and pony show, because there's nothing that's going to rectify that you're going to hear or reconcile the finances. I'm trying our best, and we're going to get through this. But they have done nothing for the residents, and they continue to do so, including of calling out residents of being detriment to them moving forward because of people like me that speak up. I've been a resident of Incline Village since 1992, and I will not be quiet, as Charlie Kirk will not be quiet. There's things going on, and it's your responsibility to make sure as overseers of Washoe County and what goes on, that this corruption and this illegal fee does not manifest itself, which it will, if you do not step in and help the citizens of Incline Village, which is unfair taxation without representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Owens, followed by Frank Wright.
Thank you very much for having us here today. My name is Patricia Owens. I moved to Incline in 1989. I've been a full-time resident, taxpayer, and property owner for those 36 years. Next month, I'll be 84. I live alone on a fixed and limited income. For over 20 years, I have been a recreation member, and I've been half of a senior couple for a membership. There are many, sorry, there are many widows, widowers, and older seniors that live up in Incline, and our taxes have gone up to $1,375 this year. And in the past, I've been able to be part of a senior couple, which is discounted, membership at the rec center. This year, or last month, actually, I was informed that I could no longer be part of a senior couple unless I lived with someone. And at 80, 84, widows, my friends that take advantage of the recreation, we swim and we use the pool, and to be part of it, I'm too old to get married. I don't want to live with somebody. I live with my two rabbits. They're very nice. My recreation partner was over 80, and without any notice or any community input, the trustees decided to change the rule, and it would raise my fee additionally $155 to be an individual member as opposed to part of a senior couple. As a super senior over 80, I could ski for free, but I used to love to ski, and it's too dangerous for me to do that. I'm hoping that we can get some kind of involvement of the board. I made a presentation to them. I've called and written to them, and I have had no response about having a meeting with some other seniors who are also suffering from this new rule. And I thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll do something to help.
Thank you. Frank Wright, followed by Mary Hutchinson.
Frank Wright, Crystal Bay. I spoke last, your last meeting back in August, and I'd like to share some information with you that I think you need to pay attention to. Your DA, Michael Large, was my personal attorney. He and I go back 15 years. We've been fighting a battle with an organization called Incline Village General Improvement District, which is absolutely out of control. They're before the Department of Taxation Committee on Local Government Finance, and they haven't answered anything. They're going to come before you today and give you a garbage so. They're not going to tell you the truth. They don't have answers. They haven't completed a Ruben Brown audit, a forensic audit report. They haven't done anything that's really working for our community. More importantly, they're charging us this fee, which, pay attention here, has no statutory limit. They can charge us anything they want to charge us. There's nothing we can do as citizens to stop it. Nothing. The county collects it. Michael told me this morning that the word and the phraseology and the collection methodology says that the county shall. Well, it doesn't say the county shall commit a criminal act by collecting an illegal fee. You cannot write your way out of the obligation and the liability that comes along with collecting an illegal tax. Why would you want to be party to something that is so wrong? It is so wrong. As the last lady was just up here, it's hurting a lot of people in our town. What did they do with that money? What they do with that money is they pay for the high-end golfers, so they have a pleasant little golf course that they don't have to pay for. Very little. $2 million of that recreation fees goes to subsidize this golf course that makes one of our trustees very happy, because he can play for a little bit of money, and all of his buddies. That's what it's for. He doesn't care about the people who live there. He doesn't care about the senior citizens who can't afford to pay the tax. These people are sick. These people are sick. You're participating with a sick organization. You're endowing them with the chance to collect money illegally. You can't do this. It's a phony tax. It's a phony tax, and there's no way that I or anybody else can protest it. There's no methodology. That right there makes it illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Hutchinson, followed by Oscar Williams.
Madam Chair, may I for a sec, one moment?
Yes.
Michael Large, District Attorney, for the record. As Mr. Wright said, I did represent Mr. Wright probably 15 years ago on a matter when I was in private practice with the Law Firm of Laxalt and Nomura. Nothing in that my representation of him or my representation of you is in conflict. I do have some knowledge of the Incline Village from that, but I wanted to clarify for the record.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that, DA Large.
Good morning, Commission, County staff. My name is Mary Hutchinson. I am the Chief Executive Officer of a local nonprofit organization called Step Two. I am here today to speak to you. Commissioner Garcia has selected Step Two as a potential funding support, and I wanted to come speak with you, say thank you to Commissioner Garcia, and also speak with the rest of you a little bit about Step Two and share our mission and what we're doing here in our community. Step Two was founded back in 1986 on the premise that a woman battling substance use disorder should not have to decide between receiving treatment or being a mom. She should get to do both. And since 1986, we have served over 5,000 women in our community. Step Two has a campus in North Reno where we have a substance use disorder residential facility where most women start our programming and live there in the facility and receive very intensive substance use disorder treatment. We also have 25 cottages on our campus, and those are one, two, and three bedrooms in size because a woman will reunify with her children on our campus, where they will live for a year while mom continues to receive outpatient services and then go through our workforce development program. Our goal at Step Two is not just to get these women clean and sober and productive members of our community, but also to get them to work so that they can support themselves and their children as they reunify. We work very closely with the Division of Children and Family Services as well as CPS to provide a healthy and safe environment for women to get clean and sober and reunify with their children. Our goal is, when they are ready to leave our campus, that mom is clean and sober, she is gainfully employed in our community, and she has re unified with her children. We help give all the tools so that they can live a successful life in our community. We can't do what we do at Step Two without the support of our community, and we've been very fortunate over the past nearly 40 years to have so many generous individuals and companies in our community support us. I just want to point out that because we're a private local nonprofit organization, 100% of every dollar donated to Step Two, whether it's through direct donation or our fundraising events, stays right here in our local community, helping local families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your great work. Oscar Williams, followed by Mick Homan.
I'm Oscar Williams. I'd like to make just a brief reply to the registrar's state of the ROV report last week or presentation, which I very much appreciate him doing, although I was quite disappointed he did not at all touch upon the continuity of operations plan. You know, we've got some real issues we need to discuss at some point. That was a good opportunity, but it was one that was not taken. It reminds me of something that just happened last night. I'm watching TV. It's around 5:25 in the evening. I'm watching TV, local news, and I'm on my computer, I'm on the internet, and my internet goes down. I'm on Spectrum, goes down like every day for a few minutes. It came back like five, 10 minutes later, but my TV stayed on. And you know why? Because I have an antenna. I have an antenna that I paid like 30 bucks for. I don't have to pay periodic licensing or maintenance fees. It works in all sorts of weather. I get a free signal, and the damn thing works. It's my little continuity of operations plan so I can watch football when Spectrum goes out on a Sunday. If we could just apply that logic to our elections and come up with some common sense solutions for when the power goes down or the state servers go offline, what are you going to do? And it's twofold at least, because you've got issues at the polling location, and then you've got issues at the central county facility. So there needs to be, you know, a plan for each location and different contingencies, whether it be power, a cyber attack, or malware, who knows what. The registrar cited a by-mail rate of voters, method of voting, and a 58.2%. Unfortunately, he didn't really mention, he could have used a subtitle that clarified it was the presidential, the PPP, the primary and the general together. You wouldn't maybe know that if he didn't come out and tell us that. So as a presentation document, it's usually common sense to provide that little detail, otherwise it's kind of misleading. But it's doubly misleading when you don't clarify that that 58.2% does not include about 120,000 of nonpartisan and other categories of voters. It's strictly the Democrat and Republicans. And he didn't mention that the GOP held its own caucus, and he failed to mention that the Secretary of State's website had a glitch that showed that everybody had voted by mail when many did not. All that could be effect on that 58.2%, it's really a misleading figure. He's shown a pattern of being misleading. For instance, let's go down to where he shows the equipment. 3,000 pieces of voting equipment. What equipment? I'd like to know. Aren't you curious what equipment we actually use to vote on, to check in voters, to verify signatures, or count and tabulate or adjudicate? Do you guys know what all the equipment is? Because we don't know. Now, again, here was an opportunity to inform the public, and he didn't do so. It sounds nice and glossy, 3,000 pieces, but it's misleading in its nature because there's no detail. I'm running out of time, so I will leave you with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mick Homan, followed by Pam Dar.
My name is Mick Homan. I'm an Incline resident. I'm also one of the Board of Trustees. I just wanted to provide you some perspective. For the most part, the comments that you're hearing from residents that are showing up and sending you notes are not representative of our community at large. The vast majority of our residents are very constructive. They're positive, they're hardworking, they're very recreation-minded. Most of us moved to Incline Village because of the incredible amenities that we have and the incredible value that we get for those amenities. But we do have a small vocal minority of our residents that continue to spread misinformation. They've made repeated unsubstantiated claims of fraud, malfeasance, and criminal activity. And despite convincing the prior board to spend almost a half million dollars of our residents' taxpayers' dollars on witch hunts, searching for their alleged fraud, none was found. They continue to mention our facility fee is an illegal tax. It's somewhat laughable. NRS 318.197 clearly provides the foundation. One of the residents challenged it all the way up to the Supreme Court and lost, and had to pay us hundreds of thousands of dollars for legal fees. They do mention fiscal watch, and to be fair, we deserved it. It gets had issues in our accounting and controls, but at least we were functional through 2023. In 2023, abusive behavior by the board and certain of our community members decimated our staff. We lost about 80% of our finance and accounting staff in the middle of a difficult and poorly planned system conversion. We did, we lost the ability to produce financials, but strong progress is being made. We have a new board with fantastic skills and leadership. We've got attorneys, we've got CPAs, we've got HR professionals. We've hired a highly qualified GM with decades of experience, successfully leading multiple government organizations. He's built his FNA leadership team with highly qualified and experienced people who have experienced leading organizations, working in public sector for multiple agencies. We were successful in completing the fiscal '24 audit. We removed the disclaimer that we received in 2023, although we still have a qualification we're working on. We've made strong progress in completing the systems and integration and addressing our controls. We are producing monthly reports. Those reports admittedly still have some quality control issues that we're addressing and will be fixed. But the board and the leadership are fully committed to remediating our issues and getting back to track. This takes time, but we're filtering out the noise and doing what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Dar, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning, Pam Dar. Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman Hill. Sorry. Trying to put my head together with everything I want to say. It's been a week since I addressed this, and I'll address it again. The homeless issue is really something that more needs to be done. I know somebody that started on the CARES campus when that first came about, and it was said that it was to get the homeless out of downtown and get them to the services they need. That hasn't happened. It's grown to every corner of Washoe and into Story County. I've talked to people that go as far as Red Hawk area, Spanish Springs, at the Anytime Fitness. She goes at midnight because she works during the day, gets the family fed, takes care of things, and that's her quiet time. And they're coming out from behind the shopping center there. I don't know why they're doing, I don't know why they're out there at midnight, way out in Red Hawk. There's no services out there. That's something I think we need to have a workshop on because it's getting into everybody's neighborhoods. It could be a safety issue and other things. I do want to go to the part of going down to the Virgil in Reno on Friday. I heard like everybody else, and I thought it was important to show up, and I'll tie that kind of to what I have to say. I went to downtown Reno, which I haven't been going to very often, and it's bad. The Riverwalk, which a lot of money was put into, it's beautiful, but all the benches there have the homeless sleeping on there. That's not getting them help that they need. They need to get to resources. It's, there's got to be a solution, and the CARES campus wasn't enough. Something just didn't work. You built it, they come, and they came in huge numbers. And if we're going to do this, every county should do it, because why should it just be put on Washoe County? And we need to figure out a solution. But that being, what happened to Charlie Kirk, I'm still numb. I broke down crying Thursday, and I was angry on Friday. These are thoughts. Even in Mexico, I saw a beautiful woman become mayor. The next day, I heard she got assassinated. We are better than that. We're not going to have good people stand up if that's a solution. Never should that be a solution. But I do know when I knocked on doors, I went to a young couple's house just out of UNR College, and they couldn't tell their professor what party they belonged to because it would affect their grade. That needs to end if we're going to be a country, that we don't turn to solutions of taking someone's neck out. So we can do better, and that's what I've told some of the young people I've talked to. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if we could have a staff person help Ms. Dare with information on our HOPE steam, that would be great, so she can help folks that she sees out and about.
Penny Brock, followed by Nicholas St. John.
Penny Brock, I'm wearing black today because I'm in mourning. I'm in mourning for Charlie Kirk, who was assassinated last week. I'm in mourning because of the attack on the First Amendment. When they couldn't win the debate with Charlie Kirk, shut down his First Amendment right, they assassinated him. I'm in mourning because of the county commission meeting last week, where we were denied our First Amendment right. You had a presentation by the ROV with no public comment allowed. That was, that denied us, the voters, the citizens, the right to our First Amendment. Then we had Washoe County Commissioner Clara Andreola. During her comments after the ROV, she announced she's bringing CISA or CIS to oversee our elections. She did this without a vote of the Washoe County Commissioners, or it being on the agenda for disclosure what CISA or CIS will do. Where is the contract, and how much will it cost taxpayers? This was an overreach of her authority. We need a vote on this. It needs to be on public agenda. She alone cannot bring it in to Washoe County. So who is CISA? Trump administration's taking care of that. Kristi Noem, DHS Director, calls CISA the censorship industrial complex. The administration, including Homeland Security Secretary Kristi Noem, used the term censorship industrial complex to describe CIS's coordination with social media companies to combat election-related misinformation. Officials argued that CIS's work in this arena was a violation of the First Amendment and an example of political overreach. We do not want an outside organization like this in our Elections Department down the hall. We, Washoe County, and the voters are to be in charge of our elections. We are here week after week after week saying, "We do not want the Dominion or any electronic voting machines. We want paper ballots. We want hand counting." We, the voters, want to be in charge of our elections. The elected county commissioners is to listen to the voters. You work for us. Please restore election integrity in Washoe. We are ranked the worst in the nation for elections. The Rasmussen, I'm not going to have time, I'll bring it next time, but the Rasmussen just showed, survey they did, voters do not want.
Thank you. Nicholas St. John, followed by Kit Wait.
For the record, Nicholas St. John, I'll actually start with item seven, because I always run out of time, because three minutes is not enough to really build any kind of a case about what we would like to bring before this board. I'd like to ask you to put me on the agenda. The information I have that I passed out last week was the Election Integrity Report that I spent months on building for the general election in 2024, which shows a significant number of anomalies and discrepancies. So I'm asking you to put me on the agenda so we can actually have a dialogue. You can ignore me. By the way, I'd like to see a show of hands of those who actually read my report from last week. No show of hands, no one read my report? Well, why would I bring it if you guys weren't going to read it? So either A, you've been instructed not to raise your hand or communicate with me in any way, or, which is, by the way, which is according to the federal law, it's fraud because you're being silent, or you've read it and you're not going to indicate that you did. So at the very least, any of the commissioners can call me back to the podium during their item to get some clarification. Which of you cares enough about free and fair elections to call me back to the podium to get some answers or at least open a dialogue? Okay, first, we have a loss of trust of the Washoe County ROV office. Even as simple as, simple as the overhead you can see, this Exhibit C, the items in red, show that they can't even do simple math. That is, this is the mail-in ballot. This is the errors that are in the early voting statistics, and this one is of election day, and there's only four, four rows, and they managed to get two of them wrong. I don't know about you, but that doesn't really instill much confidence in me that they can count 264,333 ballots. There's been a lot of manipulation of the voter rolls during this time, during the election. There was 11,400 voters that were added in the 2024 election cycle. 2,500 were switched from inactive to active. 3,510 voters were removed. Why would anyone remove voters during an active election cycle? This should disturb everyone. 988, this shows 988 were removed in one single day, 498 were removed on Sunday, and it's against the law to remove anything based on a program, which means that somehow 988 voters were removed all in one day. which means that somehow 988 voters were removed all in one day. Where did they get the staff to do that? That's two items out of my six, so anyway.
Thank you. Kit Wait, followed by Trista Gomez.
You, you left your phone here.
Just so you don't forget it.
Hello, County Commissioners. Thank you for the time to speak. My name is Kit Wait, and I first wanted to say thank you Clara Andreola for your post of Charlie Kirk last week. I think that is very appreciated to, as someone who represents the people, to speak out against that. And I want to preface with, I want to give the other County Commissioners grace because I know not everyone is super involved in social media and technology. But I do question why no one else spoke out, and I specifically am asking that to Alexis Hill, who is very active on multiple platforms on social media, and even posted last week after the event of Charlie Kirk's assassination, and had a post saying how with, I believe, in my opinion, self-righteous talk of making our communities safer and building a better community as governor. But I don't know how you do that without condemning the acts of political violence that happened last week and speaking up for freedom of speech. Regardless of your opinions of Charlie Kirk, he died fighting for our First Amendment right to speak your opinion freely. I want to hear all of the board members' thoughts on last week's event and what your opinions are. And I also want to ask and put on the agenda eventually how you as the Board of Washoe County plan to carry on Charlie Kirk's legacy of free speech in Washoe County. I want to see a plan to incorporate free speech activities so that way we as a community can communicate and express our opinions, even if they're differing. Because if we do not communicate, we will see more acts of violence that took place last week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trista Gomez, followed by Claudia Castaneda.
Good morning, Trista Gomez. As always, there's a lot to talk about. That TRPA hearing was miserable to watch the other week. This ongoing issue of collaborating with other agencies that restrict your ability to say no when it's not good for the residents. These, there's so many things. But I feel like that's not the thing to do today. I might have missed it. I hope I didn't miss it, or I hope I did miss it. I hope it was something that I just didn't catch in the first five minutes of the meeting, but I'm just going to take a minute. And I'm going to do a moment of silence within my three minutes for the political shooting last week. I'm also going to do a brief moment of silence because the rhetoric and the vitriol and the justification that I heard from unfortunately so many people in establishment positions, system positions, education positions, healthcare positions. I hope that within your departments throughout Washoe County, that Human Resources did a reach out to your conservative employees and asked them if they feel safe in the work environment that they're in right now. So I'm just going to take a brief moment of silence for the vitriol and the divisiveness of our nation and hope that maybe we can find a way to stop that. There are so many things that we can do if we work together, so many things. I am a social work graduate. It is a liberal, liberal field. I'm obviously not a liberal, which a lot of people didn't know until I ran for County Commissioner last time. But the ability to work together has to come from both sides. And the ability to work together has to be acknowledged that much of the violence and much of the intolerance comes from a place where there is a large system president, presence. It has to stop. It cannot stop without addressing the pervasive system influence of these ideas. And if we don't deal with that, and if your Human Resources don't deal with that, this will continue on. There's a lot to talk about, a lot of policies that are just affecting residents in a very negative way. But if we don't fix this thing, we are not going to fix anything.
Claudia Castaneda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today I wanted to talk about Operation Revival, which is a program, it's under a nonprofit that has been around since 2001, 2021. So we have a food pantry where we serve our community the first and third Saturday of every month. So you might be asking, well, how many people do you guys serve? On average, we serve 224 families, which is averaging to about 1,000 individuals that we serve in a month. A little breakdown is 15% are seniors, so 60-plus. 30% are 0 to 18. 42% are 19 to 59. That's who are, who we are serving. We also have a mentoring program, which we serve five elementary schools, all Title I, plus a middle school in Sun Valley. Just so far, last week, when we were out in the schools providing our mentorship program, that is, from 4th grade to 8th grade, we served 176 youth. We also have a resource fair. Last year, we served 130 families, which is about 400 individuals. This year, I would love to invite each and one of you, the Commissioners, to come and serve at our resource fair. So we have a food pantry, resources, and a medical clinic completely free for, and it will be in Sun Valley. So my ask today is for you to learn about Operation Revival, but also to please come and serve this day. I have some flyers for you. And for our community to see each and one of you serving Sun Valley by participating in our food pantry or resource fair and our free medical clinic. Thank you.
Thank you. We have nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into item four, Manager Thomas.
Thank you. Item number four is your Commissioners and County Managers announcements, reports, and updates to include Board and Commission updates, requests for information, or topic for future agendas. I have one item, if I may.
Please.
We are, for those of you that are here to either learn about or speak on item 13, that item is being pulled from today's agenda at the recommendation of the developer.
Yes, the applicant.
If you're okay.
Yes, the applicant. Yes, they wanted to pull it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
On March 26, 2025, Manager Brown mailed, mailed each one of us, emailed each one of the Commissioners a copy of President Trump's Executive Order on Election Integrity, which contains some new measures to ensure free, fair, and honest elections in order to build voter confidence in the election process. Also, the order states that losing funding and federal enforcement could be used to encourage us to do the right thing. On the local level, there have been incidences indicating that Washoe County may have a few glitch problems in their election procedures. We have all heard the horror stories and had to wait for election results for days and days. So once again, as the senior member of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners, I have the responsibility to remind the members of this board that we have a major duty to our voters pertaining to elections in this county. I am providing a way to bring sanity and sanctity and respect back to our county in the form of a brand-new election integrity bill that is in sync with the presidential executive orders we received in March. I hereby challenge the powers that be to schedule a hearing on this resolution so that the Board of Commissioners can deliberate and vote on it before October 16 of 2025. And I have a copy for all of it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Anything else?
And thank you to all the great public speakers today. I appreciate every single one of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hundreds of people gathered at the Sparks Marina on Sunday. It was a great event for the Foster Adopt and Mentor Program. We call it FAM. It was formerly known as Have a Heart, so that's been circulating around the community for a long time. But I wanted just to mention that the website where you can find the information is be the fam.washoecounty.gov. And what I kind of took away from the event, you know, we do have a shortage of foster families. We do have a shortage of adoption, adopted families. But one way that any of us can really step up to give back is just offering a few hours of your time a month as a mentor. That information can be found on the website, and so I welcome you to help spread the word. We need mentors to step up and help these students at different stages of their lives, these children. And it's a really wonderful and fulfilling way. We had heard some testimonials on Sunday of some mentors that were recognized for their work. In some cases, these relationships spanned, you know, 5, 10, and even beyond that years. So it's a really wonderful thing, and thank you to everybody who played a part in getting that successful event off the ground as we continue to raise awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And Commissioner Andreola.
Thank you. I'll just echo Commissioner Garcia's sentiment for Sunday. One of the things that I took away, it's the second annual, and I had attended last year. And just mentoring, three hours a month can change a child's life. And so I, I hope that that's a call because there is a shortage. And just working with Judge Walker over the years and in other capacities professionally has really indicated that foster children who don't have the opportunities of looking at even mentoring, let alone foster and adoption, find their way into the legal system and in some cases, become incarcerated. And if, if we can stop that cycle, even with three hours a month, I think that that's a testament to what we can do. So it was really a moving, a moving event, and I hope that everyone takes that really seriously. I know I have. I, I immediately reached out, and I'm certainly going to do what I can to help.
Amazing.
And thanks again, as Commissioner Garcia said, to everyone who organized it. It was large last year in terms of the turnout, and it was, it looked like three times larger than it was. I also would like to give a shout out to Sheriff Baylen, who won the rope tug. Congratulations to Sheriff Baylen. So, that was interesting watching. I, I, I think that if there were other people that might have, I, I think we should actually do a poll for next sheriff, who we should think should go against Sheriff Baylen, but that's another story. I also want to recognize Constitution Day, which is tomorrow. I mean, it really is commemorating the formation and signing of the U.S. Constitution on September 17 of 1787. Being that I was in Philadelphia, I really felt super connected. I've always felt connected. But I find myself reading a lot and really appreciating all the forefathers who came before us and, and really forming the great nation that we, we are here to serve. I'd also like to, it's, it's a, a large time notice in terms of advance notice, but I've been working with the Human Services Agency folks, some of them, along with some constituents and, and veterans and veterans organizations for quite some time. And I'm happy to share that Veterans Day Observance is going to be on Friday, November 7. So there's plenty of notice to put this down on your calendar from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 at the Sparks Senior Center. And they are asking for RSVPs. There's going to be a lot of recognition, and I hope everyone can attend. You can either RSVP via email at senior underscore info at washoecounty.gov, or you can call to register at 775-328-2575. And I'd also like to speak to the tragedy. It's not just recent. It's, it's just this pervasive ability or inability to be civil with each other. And I think it's a call to everyone, even in public comment or through discourse, that we have a commitment to each other, to understand each other. It's really a renewed commitment to the dignity index. If you're not aware of it, I would encourage you to even watch some of the videos that have really touched this really important moment in our country. You know, watching the message from the Governor of Utah, I think also spoke to, not only to all of us, even to the hope of young people coming forward and, and changing and being that catalyst for change. You know, we really need to be respectful of differences. We work better when we have differences. We get to a better place when we have differences. Trying to explain things sometimes are complex, and it's just been, I think, hard for everyone. And I'm very, very hopeful. I know at the Spanish Springs Cab, we've been working, I've been working with the Board members, the Board leadership, and, and bringing in, and we're looking at what we can do to bring the dignity index at the forefront of, of the Spanish Springs Cab. And hopefully we can look at that in terms of having an understanding that it's really, when you're talking with contempt, and you're, and that's how you're, you're actually delivering a message, it's very difficult to be really open to differences. And I think we have to recognize that. So if you're not familiar with the dignity index, I'd encourage, I have no stake in the dignity. I just really think it's a call to what we need more now than, than ever. And the last thing, Madam Chair, thank you for the time. I'd like to just reset us back to last year at the strategic planning meeting, when we, as a collective board, had the priorities in front of us for various projects with the Community Services Department. And we all voted on those priorities in terms of moving forward and giving direction to staff from that perspective. That was a year ago, and I know it's probably not a big surprise, but I'd like to request that we bring the priorities back because many of them have been completed or very close to being completed. And one of the things I, I've really been, even last year, I had, I had had dialogue with colleagues about pushing the equine business ordinance to number one. But there were several that were above it that had been in the works for quite some time that now look like they're complete. So I've also asked for the agritourism. I've asked for dark skies. So there are some things that I think others may have some interest too. And I think looking at bringing that back, Madam Chair, and the interim County Manager, if we could look at putting that back on the agenda so we can reprioritize and not have to wait necessarily for another strategic planning meeting, I think that would help. And I know that, well, those are my three, and there might be more, but I certainly would appreciate that opportunity for all of us to collectively discuss that.
Great idea. We should get back on track on the planning priorities. And Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got four or five different items that are all over the place. And so I'm going to start off with the first one. I think it's one of the most amusing in one way, but other ways very, very troublesome. Yesterday, I had a workman at my house and waiting for, for him to get things done. Turn the power off, turn the water on, turn the power off on, you know, one of those things. We've got a workman there, you're running around doing something. You really don't, can't really do a lot. So I, in my in-between time, I was watching some YouTube videos on how to fix this or do that. And, and up on the, on the screen pops a funny one, I thought. It was a brutally honest review of Burning Man 2025. So I thought I'd take a look at that. And I thought, you know, I'd see people splashing around in mud. know, I'd see people splashing around in mud or whatever that might have been happening out there. But it wasn't really that. It was two DJs from Southern California who tried to rent a motor home to go to Burning Man. And once the folks that rented these realized the dates they wanted, said, oh, you're going to Burning Man, we're not going to rent you this motor home. So they get another car, they head up, they stop in Bishop, they end up in Reno. And this is the part that's the most important part of this. Whatever happened in Burning Man, it happened in Burning Man. But it was how they got to Burning Man that should be a focus of everyone on this dais and everyone in our community. They ended up driving to Bishop, then they drove to Reno, and then they stayed at a hotel right over on Fifth and Sutro. What is that, about two, three blocks away from here? The big giant diamond casino there. And they're filming this, and there's, you know, it's a road story and how we got here. And it showed to the world what we have created here. They were accosted in the parking lot, broad daylight, by drug sellers. They were accosted in the parking lot, broad daylight, by working women. And, you know, on and on and on. This is the kind of thing that, these are unintended consequences. Forget what happened to Burning Man and then was getting stuck in the driveway to get in for eight to 10 hours. But if everybody just takes a look at this YouTube video, brutally honest view, review of Burning Man 2005, and just watch how we're depicted. Watch how we're depicted. Look how many views that that video's got. That's only a couple of blocks away from the CARES campus. It's only a couple of blocks away from where we're sitting right now. This is how, this is how we're portrayed. Are we numb to it? Are we desensitized to it? We've got to do better with that CARES campus and the homelessness and the people running around here. You know, on the same very street, we've got one of the most beautiful things in the whole, the whole state. Just down the street is the Truckee River. And right up the street is this hotel that they're getting accosted in, broad daylight. And right a couple of blocks away from that's the CARES campus. We need to concentrate on that and make things better here. You know, we need to concentrate. That's, that's the city of Reno that is encompassed that hotel. That's their law enforcement folks that should be patrolling that area in broad daylight. But also, it's our county's CARES campus that is the drawing point to that. We need to look at this. I encourage everybody to look at that YouTube video and share with your friends. And look how the world looks at us. Should be embarrassed. Next, I would like to say, what a lucky day. You know, I left my house and I walked back in and I got this book. This is the Mike Clark reading book. This is How to Counter Group Manipulation Antics, Tactics, excuse me. Let's read you one quick paragraph. "How many times have you had the unsettling experience of being treated as a troublemaker as soon as you question or raise an objection to a school policy, a textbook, a course of study, a new county regulation, or a community proposal?" This book, right here, tells you everything you need to know about the dignity index. Group manipulation, how to make you feel bad for asking a question. Please read this book, and you'll have a much better time here at the county commission meetings, dealing with my fellow commissioners. This book is a must-read. This book tells you exactly how the Delphi system works and how you get a group of several folks that act like you don't have a voice. You know, some of the folks talked about the Charlie Kirk situation. I didn't follow this man. I see him once in a while on YouTube, but I am not a devotee. But anybody who gets killed for using their voice is not right. I don't care who you are. Martin Luther King was shot for not, for using his voice. Lots of people, Kennedys were shot for using their voice. Here's another one, shot for using their voice. And yet, at this very chamber last year, the county chair unilaterally took away public comment. Okay? And right now, it's pending to be on the agenda for my fellow commissioners want to vote whether they can take away the commissioner's right to have open comments, like I'm doing right now. They want to take away the commissioner's rights with a vote. So unilaterally, they do something, then they, then they're going to try and vote on it, and somebody else does it with a bullet. It's all silencing people's voices. We're up here all the time. We have to hear everybody. I don't agree with everybody, but I certainly appreciate everyone who comes to public comment and lets us know what their issues are. This is an opportune time for us to listen to the people. You don't have to agree with them, but you don't have to shoot them. You don't have to agree with them, but you don't have to take away their voice. That's the problem here. Next, I want to move to IFGID. Thanks for Aaron Katz, Judith Miller, Michael Smith, Lynette Cardinelli, Frank Wright. These folks are bringing something to our attention. I don't know what the presentation is going to be today. These folks are relatively new, I believe, at managing this organization. There's a history going back to, thank you, Mr. Katz, for since 1965. So we certainly can't hold these people accountable for what the public sees as maybe some mismanagement. If there's a foundation this is built on. But what troubles me the most is the allegation of not having financial oversight for a number of years, for not having, have an audit on this, for not having a mechanism for the people to voice their opinion on this. And apparently, that's, that's according to, I guess, Mr. Wright mentioned that, that they have no recourse whatsoever. We need to find out about that. And we need to have, and I think that county should insist on an audit and find out what's taking place. Ms. Miller brought up some, did a great job with her presentation and a nice handout for us. I don't know if you all got to see that, but this is something that needs to be addressed. We need to look at that and find out and then put it to rest. It's either as the people accuse it of, or it isn't. And so let's, let's find out. Let's get to the bottom of that. And lastly, I want to talk about just something that just doesn't want to seem to go away, the library board. Just on the, on the news, Monday morning, apparently, somebody self-appointed library employee decides to hold a news conference or a fact-finding segment on Channel 8 News here, and telling about layoffs and library closings and on and on and on. I want to know why some county employee gets to self-appoint themselves as a spokesperson for the county commissioners here, for the leadership of this county. You know, I'm going to see the fire chief here. I understand that, you know, I hope that the fire chief is a spokesman for his organization and just doesn't let anybody speak for it. You know, I hope that the medical examiner here, she speaks for her organization. She doesn't just let an employee quote policy. Why do we let this happen? We've had some, almost 4,000 county employees. The sheriff is here. I don't think the sheriff just lets somebody right out of the academy be the spokesperson for him. I don't think that person would make it through probation if that took place. So why do we, this county, this HR department, this, this division of the county, allowing just somebody to grab a microphone and tell people how it is and create more hard feelings with folks, saying that we're going to close the library, we're going to lay off people? We've gone through this again and again and again, and we haven't decided to do anything. Why would somebody say that? Just to stir the pot? I'd like to know that. So I'd like a staff report on that, please. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I wanted to also highlight that today, we broke ground on the Washoe County Behavioral Health Center, and we are so excited for that building to be opened and newly remodeled for our community, our most vulnerable community members, our youth with acute behavioral and mental health needs. And so I want to thank this board and its leadership and moving forward with that project. And I can't wait until we can better serve our community members to ensure that we can get them back in school and, you know, back with their families. And so it's such an incredible asset that we have in this county, and I'm glad that we stepped up when it closed, the West Hills facility, and we did that. Additionally, I have some similar concerns, not the same concerns that Commissioner Clark brought up about the libraries. I, I don't know if all this whole board knew that 20 positions were going to be frozen and that library hours were going to be cut. And I think that we need to figure out a better interface with the library board to understand what direction they're giving our staff and what we have approved in the budget, because we approved full funding for the library. Yes, we asked for any efficiencies to be looked at, but I don't think that, I could be wrong, but anyone on this board really thought that we would have 20 positions open and we would have the library doors shut to community members when we had just expanded them to our working family, especially when our working families are pushed so hard right now, the economic times are so difficult for our community members. We need the library as an asset for our community. And so I'd like to chat with staff, and I also think that we need to have a discussion on how we better learn about the library board's activities, how we liaison with them, and how this board can be kept up to speed about decisions that are made. Because it's my understanding that the Board of County Commissioners is the final budget decider and for the libraries. And so I think that we just need some clarification on that. And I apologize to the community. We want to do better for you. And I would like to, I think we're going to have a presentation on the library in October. Is that true, Manager Thomas? Okay. To have this discussion, because I think we need to figure out how we're going to move forward without jeopardizing services, which the library is an essential service to our community. So we now are going to move into our proclamations. We have 5A1, which Commissioner Clark is actually going to help us with. And Manager Thomas?
Thank you. 5A1 proclaims September 16th, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day. And we have our registrar voters, Andrew McDonald, and some staff here to receive the proclamation that Commissioner will read.
Commissioner Clark, are you going to read the proclamation? Oh, I apologize. I called you up for the wrong one. I apologize. Vice Chair Herman, I'm so sorry. That's on me. I'm confusing.
Sorry for the little mix-up.
That's on me. I apologize, Vice Chair.
Quick enough, I guess. Okay. Proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners. Whereas, one of the most precious and fundamental rights of United States citizens is the right to vote. And whereas, registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote and have a voice in the electoral process, promoting civic engagement. And whereas, Washoe County has over 346,800 registered voters, which continues to increase as our community grows. And it grows. And whereas, the voter registration process in Nevada and in Washoe County is now easier and more convenient than ever with in-person registration available at the Office of the Registrar of Voters. Voter registration applications are available at local libraries, post offices, at state voter registration agencies, and through online voter registration available at registratovotnv.gov. And whereas, September has been proclaimed National Voter Registration Month. And whereas, Americans across the nation have celebrated National Voter Registration Day on the 4th Tuesday in September, serving as a single day where we affirm a strong sense of civic pride and encourage our fellow citizens to register to vote. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 16th as National Voter Registration Day, dated the 16th day of September 2025, and signed by our Chair, Alexis Hill.
Thank you. Do y'all have anything to say?
Okay, I'll kick us off. For the record, Reggie Greer, Deputy Registrar of Voters. And we want, for National Voter Registration Day, we want to give you just a couple milestones and tell you how to register to vote as well, too. So a couple milestones that made today possible. African-American men secured the right to vote through a long struggle involving multiple key moments in U.S. history, most notably, the ratification of the 15th Amendment in 1870. Unfortunately, discriminatory practices were used to stop people of color from exercising the right to vote. While several laws extended voting rights to minorities, minority Americans, it was not until the Voting Rights Act of 1965 that legal barriers preventing them from voting were banned.
Good morning. Addy Vetter, for the record, Deputy Registrar of Voters. To continue off of the milestones for registering to vote, women in the United States gained the right to vote in 1920 with the ratification of the 19th Amendment, following decades of activism by suffragists who fought to secure equal voting rights. Since then, the power of women's votes have helped shape elections, drive policy change, and strengthen democracy. In 1975, Congress amended the Voting Rights Act to require bilingual election materials in areas with large language minority populations, helping ensure fair access for non-English voters. The Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 further strengthened voting rights by requiring full accessibility at every stage of the voting process, ensuring that voters with disabilities can fully and equally participate in the electoral process.
Andrew McDonald, for the record, Registrar of Voters here in Washoe County. Just wanted to mention, there are three ways to register to vote. Online at registratovotnv.gov. Two, second place, in person. At our office, the DMV, post office, or other state agencies. Third, by mail. So you can call us, request a form emailed to you at, from our office at 775-328-3670, and we'll get you that form. Qualifications to register to vote, a few. Must be a U.S. citizen. Must turn 18 by Election Day. Must be 17 of age in order to pre-register to vote. Have continuously resided in Washoe County for the last 30 days and 10 days in your precinct leading up to an Election Day. Provide proof of valid ID and residency. There are roughly 500,000 people living in Washoe County. Of those, 400,000 are over 18 years old. As of yesterday, we had 344,000 active registered voters. What that means is there's 14% or 56,000 Washoe County residents that are still not registered to vote. So we're here today to ask those residents and those citizens to please register to vote. If you want to change your politics or keep them the same, that is your prerogative. It's your right. So make a plan, take action. Your vote is your voice. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. What an impressive team. Thank you for your work. All right.
Can I say one more?
Yes, please.
I would like to make an appointment with Oscar Williams and Nicholas St. John here to address some of their comments. I'd be more than happy to be transparent with them and set up some meetings with them. I'd be more than happy to be transparent with them and set up some meetings with them.
Thank you so much. That's leadership. We appreciate that. And now, it's Vice Chair Herman. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. It's in the form of a motion. I am looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, is there a public comment on that?
We do have two people signed in.
Oh, okay.
First up is Tracy Thomas, followed by Nicholas St. John.
It appears that staff continues to fail to proofread public documents for accuracy, soundness, and completeness, further deteriorating the public's confidence and this body's competence in serving the needs of taxpayers in an efficient and conscientious manner. It's leading us to believe that once again, our election ballots are going to need to be reprinted several times, resulting in careless waste of the hard-earned and sacrificed funds we have entrusted you with. The last whereas statement in your proclamation states National Voter Registration Day is celebrated on the 4th Tuesday in September, where you are celebrating it on the 3rd Tuesday. There's calendars that say that it's actually on the 24th, and there's not any clear definition on it. So, which is that if it is correct, where is the reasoning for not celebrating it on the correct date? You could still declare it today and still have it observed on the correct date. Furthermore, the proclamation does not address documentary proof of citizenship requirements stipulated in Federal Executive Order 14248 dated March 25th, which was summarized for you on March 26 by former manager Brown. Since you are responsible for the accuracy of our voter database, what are you doing to verify all data entered online? Garbage in, garbage out. Lip service is given to the precious right of citizens to vote and having a voice in the electoral process. Unfortunately, that voice is silenced and stripped away when ineligible non-citizens are quickly registered with no verification of citizenship conducted, as required by 52 USC 20507, before they are issued a ballot and violating our election laws of NRS 293.485 and .800. Where is the public announcement to encourage currently registered voters to submit the required documents proactively so as to reduce time at the polls? Where is the community outreach on college campuses to ensure students aren't registered to their home address outside of Washoe County? Yes, that was a huge issue in 2018, but you would have to have institutional knowledge to know that. The most frightening part of this is that none of you are asking these questions.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Ann Marie Grant.
Nicholas St. John, for the record, one of the things that I had in my report was about the voter rolls and being, we're talking about voter registration day that directly involves the voter rolls. One of the things that I found in my report that was a problem was that there were 3,510 voters removed during the election. I already showed that 988 had been removed in one day, 498 had been removed on a Sunday, 604 had been removed who actually voted, which I'm not sure why someone who actually voted on the 5th of November would have their, be removed from the voter rolls and were encouraging people to register to vote. Removing 3,500 people seems like a lot of people to be removed from the voter rolls. That's 1% of our electorate. So my question is, which we have a big problem with, is getting voter rolls cleaned up. So I'm going to ask the board to maybe make a proclamation of a voter roll cleanup day that we can actually celebrate getting our voter rolls cleaned up. Just for the record, I interviewed two families that their fathers had died before Election Day, and yet their votes were counted. So two dead people that I know of voted. I'm not sure that's what we want to be known for, and we're talking about getting people on their voter rolls. Let's make sure that people that shouldn't be voting don't as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please report that, those instances to the Secretary of State. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
That's actually everyone we have signed in for that item.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And Commissioner Clark, is that an aye?
Aye.
Okay, cool. And that, it's up on the screen, but you got Commissioner Clark's aye. Okay.
Commissioner Herman?
It's just up on your screen, Vice Chair.
Oh, do you want to?
No worries. Thank you. All right, we'll now go to 5B1. I'm so sorry, Commissioner Clark, and this is your proclamation. Go ahead.
Very well. Those little glitches happen from time to time. I'm so proud to welcome the Sheriff, our Sheriff Darren Balem, here to the meeting this morning with his staff. I believe this is the folks, is this everyone from your office, or there's some?
Nope, this is a big chunk of our Forensic Science Division.
So the Forensic Science Division is here to accept this. And I was just talking to the Sheriff. I got the opportunity to go through the crime lab, for lack of a better word, their laboratory last year, was it? And Sheriff tells me he's going to have another open house. So I encourage anybody that's interested in this to find out what that date is and go visit the lab and see the great work that they do. So with that, I'm going to start with the proclamation. Whereas, forensic science service providers play a critical role in criminal investigation by delivering objective, science-based information that supports justice and public safety throughout Washoe County, serving as an essential component of the criminal justice system by providing accurate and timely scientific analysis to law enforcement agencies, attorneys, and the courts. And whereas, Washoe County Sheriff's Office Forensic Science Division is composed of 50 dedicated scientists, support staff, and volunteers who specialize in a wide range of disciplines, including DNA analysis, breath, alcohol testing, controlled substance, crime scene response, firearms examination, latent print processing and comparison, and toxicology, and serving 13 of Nevada's 17 counties. And whereas, the week of September 14th through the 20th, 2025, marks the 13th Annual National Forensic Science Week, a nationwide observance that highlights the invaluable contributions of forensic scientists and their laboratories while raising awareness of their critical work, recognizing their achievements, and advocating for continued resources and support to strengthen forensic services across our communities. And whereas, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents to learn more about forensic science and its vital role in enhancing the safety and fairness and effectiveness of our justice system. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September 14th through 20th, 2025, as National Forensic Science Week.
Thank you. Congratulations. What a stellar team our sheriff has.
How's it with you, Mr. Herr?
Come on up. Share a few words.
I want to real quick introduce our Director, Steve Johnson, because him and his amazing staff do things I think our community doesn't know, so I'd like him to say a few words.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Steve Johnson, for the record. With this being National Forensic Science Week, I just want to emphasize the talented individuals we have at the laboratory. We are really blessed in our community and the communities throughout Nevada that we serve for these individuals. They're intelligent, they're hardworking, and they're really dedicated to the work that they do on a daily basis. And so we're blessed to have such an incredible team. This morning, I have a few members of our leadership team with us, but we do have about 50 people in our laboratory, and they are constantly working cases for agencies throughout Nevada. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you all for your service. We're so lucky to have you at Washoe County. It's a hard job. Okay, Commissioner Clark, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
We have Ann Marie Grant signed in.
Okay.
I thought you might want to hear my comment before you voted, but typical. My name is Ann Marie Grant, and I'm here to remind you that real forensic science should be about truth, not about cover-ups. Sheriff Balem, since you're here today, I want to speak directly to you. My brother, Thomas Purdy, was murdered inside the Washoe County Jail in 2015. He was hogtied, suffocated in the medical examiner in this county. Dr. Laura Knight falsely ruled his death excited delirium. That is not science. That is junk terminology designed to excuse deputies from accountability. My family is not the only family that is the victim of junk science in this county. Nico Smith's death was also labeled excited delirium. He was asphyxiated at the Washoe County Jail as well by deputies. Under the sheriff's watch, there have been 16 in custody deaths, at least 16. 16 lives lost while your office points to bad science instead of facing the truth. If this board is going to recognize National Forensic Science Week, then let's actually talk about forensic science. True science exposes misconduct. It does not excuse it. Real science helps families find answers, not false narratives like mine was given. Sheriff Balem, if you truly respect science and acknowledge the misuse of excited delirium in this county, acknowledge the families who have been lied to, work with us to bring transparency and reform, or step aside for someone who will. My family will not be silent. We will not accept false science as an excuse for lost lives. Our loved ones deserve the truth, and we demand justice. And there's so many families in this county that have been lied to and given false narratives, and we'll all be at the federal courthouse for the eighth year this Saturday demanding accountability in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's up on your screen. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We're now going to move into presentations, and I'm so sorry, I'm going to move up 6B1 so Dr. Knight can get back to the office, and then we will do our if-got presentation. Do you have to go, too? This will be really quick, I promise. So 6B1, Manager Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 6B1 is a presentation by our own Dr. Laura D. Knight, Chief Medical Examiner and Coroner, on the National Association of Medical Examiners accreditation process. She'll also accept a certificate in recognition of this accreditation for the Washoe County Regional Medical Examiner's Office, which was effective August 13th, 2025. Welcome, Dr. Knight.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I will try to keep my comments brief. Dr. Laura Knight, the Washoe County Chief Medical Examiner and Coroner, for the record. Good morning. Thank you all for being here. We have been accredited by the National Association of Medical Examiners, or NAME. NAME is the national professional organization of physician medical examiners, medical legal death investigators, and associated administrators who perform the official duties of investigating deaths of public interest in the U.S. NAME promotes excellence in medical legal death investigation and autopsy performance, and to that end, they offer a voluntary accreditation process. And accreditation is an honor and significant achievement for an office, signifying to the public that the office is performing at a high level of competence and public service. Now, there are over 2,000 medical examiner and coroner offices in the United States. Only 82 of them, including our office now, are accredited by NAME. That's only 4%. Inspection includes 352 detailed individual criteria, everything from the facility to quality assurance to reporting standards. And finally, administration, including the staffing levels of the office. A qualified inspector, who's usually a medical examiner themselves, actually performs a physical inspection of the facility, as well as looking at all staffing, policies, and procedures of the office. During our inspection in July, we received no deficiencies of any type and achieved a perfect score. We're very excited about that, and we were excited and blessed to be called by our inspectors as one of the best medical examiner offices in the United States.
Oh my gosh, that's incredible. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. If I may, I just want to acknowledge a few people. I want to say that this milestone has really been over a decade in the making, and it's thanks to my predecessor, Dr. Ellen Clark's vision, that the new facility exists and that we are in a medical examiner system now rather than a coroner system by county code. And those foundational pieces really laid the groundwork for this, and there was a lot of additional work to get there. So I also want to thank all of my staff, a very dedicated, professional team. Without their contributions, we would not be here. And so we moved this up, so I don't know if they've made it into the room to be acknowledged, but Operations Manager Justin Norton was critical to this, as well as Administrative Assistant Chelsea Houston, and my Deputy Chief Medical Examiner, Dr. Claire Bryce, as well as our supervisory staff in the office, who are Rudy Vine, Kelly Oxborough, and Sarah Turner. And then finally, I wanted to thank Washoe County leadership as well, from this august board, as well as the county manager and assistant county managers who have provided high-level support to our office that has really allowed us to focus on our mission of being the regional center of excellence in death investigation. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. What a big day for you and your team, and you have rock star staff. Commissioner Andriola.
So, being the rock star, really, 10 years, I think that you have already shared all of the hard work, not only getting this esteemed recognition, and it's really amazing, the fact that this is a small way of recognizing hours and hours of exemplary service, of high standards that you give to our community, not only you in leadership, but the staff who supports our community. So on behalf of the Washoe County Commission, we're offering you this award that you deserved and you were recognized for by the National Association of Medical Examiners. So congratulations.
Congratulations. Wow. Wonderful work. Thank you. Please tell your team how much we support them. We know it's a hard job, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into presentations.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Madam Chair, that was in the form, that needed to be in the form of a motion for possible action.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought it was just a presentation. I apologize. And Commissioner Clark, you wanted to talk? Yes, sir?
I was just wondering why we didn't pause for a photo with the staff, since they're here.
Okay.
Commemorate this moment.
Yes, we can definitely pause for a photo. Let me just do public comment, because this is an action item. I didn't realize that. I apologize. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
We have Ann Marie Grant signed in.
Thank you.
My name is Ann Marie Grant, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my brother, Thomas Purdy, who was murdered in the custody of Washoe County Sheriff's Office. My brother had a mental health crisis at the Pepper Mill and asked for help. After he asked for help, he was hogtied and suffocated. Washoe County Medical Examiner, sorry, I'm short. Dr. Laura Knight chose to protect law enforcement instead of telling truth. She labeled my brother's death excited delirium on his autopsy report, a label that has been rejected by the American Medical Association, the American Psychiatric Association, and even banned in California because it is not a legitimate medical diagnosis. Your medical examiner has eyes, and she saw the video, and I invite everyone here to view the video, that I can never erase from my mind of my brother being smothered to death by Washoe County deputies on his back and neck while he was still hogtied. Excited delirium has been used nationwide to excuse killings by law enforcement. In Thomas's case, it erased the reality that deputies in Reno Police piled on him, hogtied him like a wild animal, and took his life. My family is not the only one impacted by Dr. Knight's false sciences. As stated before, Nico Smith, death was also labeled excited delirium, the same label that denied his family the truth and mine. Under the current sheriff, as I just mentioned, there are 16 deaths. How many of those did she cover up? How many of those weren't really suicides? When the medical examiner engages in deception, it destroys public trust, and it guarantees that other families will suffer the same injustice we have. My brother came here on vacation, and he went home in a body bag. Washoe County residents deserve better than a medical examiner who uses discredited junk science to shield law enforcement, and I am demanding that this commission open an independent review of her conduct and her reliance on excited delirium, and my brother's death, and Nico Smith's, and who knows how many others. Families like mine, like Nico's and many others who have lost a loved one in the jail, should not have to fight for decades. I'm going on 10 years, and it's I'm going on ten years, and it still feels like day one that my brother came here on vacation and was murdered at the jail, and then your medical examiner covered it up. Please remember, my brother, Thomas Purdy, was a human being. He was my brother. He deserved truth. He deserved life. And at the very least, he deserves an accurate record of how he was murdered in this county.
We have nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will, okay, I'm looking for a motion. Commissioner Andriola? Thank you. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We did take public comment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And it passes unanimously. We'll take a quick break to take a photo, and then we'll go into our next presentation, 6A1. Okay. Okay. One, two, three. Let's do several. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay. We'll now move into 6A1, Manager Thomas.
Thank you. 6A1 is an IFGID presentation. You have your general manager and board chair here to present an update on the services offered and a financial update from the Incline Village General Improvement District Organization. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Do we need to turn anything on? We're good?
I think it's on.
Perfect. Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Michaela Tonking. I am the IFGID Board Chair. I have had the privilege of serving on this board. This is my second term, and I had the opportunity of growing up in Washoe County up in Incline Village. I have our new GM, Robert Harrison, who is about seven months into this role and has come down here to work at IFGID. I want to start and say that some things have changed since you were initially asked to give this presentation a few months ago, and there isn't a slide on it, but I would love to talk a little bit about our financial situation at the beginning, especially since Commissioner Clark had also brought it up. So, we went on to Financial Watch, and as our treasurer stated, was not without cause. We went on there through the LCGF about a few months ago, but since then, we have completed our 2024 audit, have given that to the state. We have also been able to get a new auditor, since that contract was up with our previous auditor, and have got that done. We also, this year, reinstated doing budget workshops. So, we had four budget workshops throughout the winter, and then we also, during all of those workshops, provided public input and comment. In addition, we have also have our audit committee that is made up of members of the public, as well as two board members, and that is granting oversight to, to ensure that this audit goes much smoother than we have seen in previous year, or in the previous year. The other thing is, we are still not, we still need to make more progress. We tried to introduce a new ERP system in 2020, and that was not as successful as we would hope. And so, we now have budgeted to ensure that the dollars are there for us to contract with Tyler and with our team, to make sure that we are able to make more progress there and get that finalized. And then, another big area we want to address is our controls, because we did have a financial risk audit or fiscal audit done about 16 months ago. So, that's where we sit there, and that was on a slide. So, I just wanted to make sure that was stated. And then, IFGID is designed to maintain the reputation of our community as an excellent place to live, work, regularly visit, and invest. We are a fiscally responsible community partner that provides utility service and community-oriented recreation programs, and we have the mantra, "One district, one team." Our board member is consistent of five members of the board. We all serve four-year terms, and we're elected on a three-two cycle. And so, we have a lot of expertise on our board. Mr. Tullock and Mr. Noble both have utility experience. Mr. Tullock works as a consultant in that area, and Mr. Noble used to work for the PUC in Nevada. We have Michelle Yudzieski, who's our vice chair. She used to be an HR director for the Senate and has that HR experience. And then, we bring in Mr. Homan, who is the former Chief Accounting Officer for Procter Gamble. And so, we get that. I also have an accounting background and do school funding for states across the country. So, we are all here as our hobby in some ways, that we get paid a little bit for, but we all have other full-time commitments. But that is our board, and then I will pass it over to our GM.
Thank you, Chair Tonking. Good morning. I think it's still morning. Couple more minutes. I appreciate all of you and watching you this morning. My name's Robert Harrison. I joined IFGID here at the end of January. My career, I've been in city management for thirty-plus years in three different states. Most recently, in Yakima, Washington, and came down here to join IFGID. Got to a great opportunity to meet some of your administrative leadership and your elected leadership during the time that I've been here, and I just want to say thank you to all of you. Both your elected and administrative leadership has been very responsive to us when we've got issues. They're always willing to help, and we sincerely appreciate. It's very different than a lot of counties I've had the opportunity to work with over the years during my career. So, appreciate that. This is our leadership team, starting with me on the left. Our Finance Director joined us. She's got thirty-plus years of financial experience in California, from, you know, accounting clerk all the way up to Finance Director. Susan Heron is our Administrative Services Director. She's been with the district for thirty years in a variety of roles. Mike Bandelin, most recently, got promoted to Director of Community Services. He just won a Legacy Award from the Ski Association. He's had a thirty-plus-year career in ski, ten years before that, different odd jobs working for the district, but a real committed individual. And then, our Public Works Director, Kate Nelson, who came to us from the public sector, private sector, and then joined us about four years ago. Here's some data just about the community in terms of our households, median age, density and income, and then racial breakup. And we wanted to touch base briefly. I'll go back to our board chair.
And so, we want to talk a little bit about our facility fee that has been brought up throughout these public comments, as you have heard. Our facility fee is what we use. It's broken out into community services and a beach fee, given that different people have different access to those amenities. It is mainly used to deal with our capital improvements and our debt and that kind of thing. We have kept the fee consistent from FY 2011 to FY '22 at $830 a parcel. Then, in FY '23, '22 and '23, we lowered it to $780, and that was because we had extra reserves at that time. The board in FY '24 and FY '25 lowered it down to roughly $450. At that point, we lost a lot of the reserves, and we were unable to keep up with a lot of our maintenance and infrastructure, since we have aging infrastructure. So, that is why we saw this jump this year, to make up for that loss that we had in the prior years. So, we just want to talk a little bit about that. We're given the ability to do this through NRS 318-197, and we also follow NRS 318-210 to ensure that it is properly put out to open forum and discussion.
Thank you. Yes, and contrary to what had been stated earlier, it is a perfectly legal fee. It's been tested all the way up to the Supreme Court. There was a decision made on that, and as was mentioned earlier by our treasurer, a $247,000 judgment for legal fees were recovered by the district because of the, what in our opinion is a frivolous lawsuit. Moving on, in terms of our fundamentals, we kind of started out with, you know, sewer and water, which every community needs to have, and that is still an important part of what we do at our Public Works Department. We have approximately 8,120 water users and 8,031 wastewater users. It's a pretty technically complex system with the variety of hills, you know, different parts of the natural environment that we have to work through. We also have a limit by the federal government in terms of where our wastewater goes, so we can't continue to discharge that into the Lake Tahoe basin. We actually have to send it via pipeline, and we just completed the replacement of that. It's over a $40 million project that runs over to Carson City, and many years ago, someone with some forethought bought over 900 acres of land, which is where our water ends up getting disposed of over in Carson City. We have a engineering team that does most of our capital projects and improvements, of which one of those large ones, we're replacing the beach house down at one of our primary beaches at Incline. And then, what really helps, I think, after the fundamentals, it makes it special as all the community services that we have. And with that, I'll go back to our chair.
Yeah, I'll quickly just read through what we have. There's more slides on them, so you can dig deeper, but I want to be able to talk about how we are hoping we can also partner somewhere with the county and some things that our constituents have brought up. But we have a ski resort, we have two golf courses, a recreation center, a tennis and pickleball center, and then we have a boat ramp, as well as three different beach locations that offer paddleboard kayaking, and we have a pool as well. And so, yeah, we can start to go through these. We don't run out of time, and you can run to some of them. But yes, please enjoy looking through the slides on what we have to offer there.
Variety of recreational amenities, even the wetlands hunting programs kind of interest. So, the way they were able to convert that 900 acres, we've got seventeen duck blinds that our residents and other people in Washoe County can come in, lease from us, and go in and actually do some hunting in that area, as well as all these other items. And all of these are paid for primarily through the recreation fee and the facilities fees that we end up charging for, which you heard about earlier, tennis pickleball center, the restricted beach access. I think that froze. Am I doing okay on time up there? Are you just giving me extra time?
You're doing okay. Yeah, it's a guide, but we want to make sure we hear the full presentation.
Thank you. So, and just wanted to touch base, since we have this opportunity, I mentioned earlier that we have sincerely appreciated the opportunity to work with your appointed and elected officials. We haven't had a significant opportunity to work with four of you. We have worked with Commissioner Hill on several items and appreciate her support on these things. These are some things that have come up that may either be directly or ancillary involved with IFGID, but we do, and our need of some transportation improvements. We had a meeting with the sheriff yesterday and talked about two intersections that have caused some concern over on Southwood and Incline Boulevard, and then, as well as Southwood and Tahoe Boulevard, that could be improved upon, but we see pretty regularly premised near accidents at those two intersections. We've seen a real explosion in e-bikes up in Incline Village, and so, we want to make sure and would be happy to provide any input or feedback on enhancing safety regulations around e-bikes as it continues to work up there. Workforce housing is an issue for us, as well as a real issue for our business community. We've worked with the Incline Village Crystal Bay Association on talking about opportunities to work together on workforce housing. I know the commissioners have been very actively involved with that as well, and we're supportive of that. In terms of parking regulations, this year, up at Diamond Peak Ski Hill, we added boat parking, so individuals can come and lease a parking spot to get all of these boats and trailers off our streets, which really caused challenges for pedestrians and others who walk within the community or ride their bikes within the community. And so, seeing if there's some additional parking regulations that could be put in place by the county around the streets would be great. You've continued to support our senior programs for years. We have a pretty active senior community up there, and we do appreciate that. And the last couple items, we also have a lot of youth programs, which we support. And then, we just had the board had a conversation last, at the last meeting, and tonight is issuing another letter. Public records continue to be a problem. Unfortunately, we do have some people in the community who abuse the public records process, from my perspective. And like, we just had one that came in. It's estimated it costs us over $40,000 to have our attorneys review that. Those public records for redactions, that's $40,000 could be invested into a whole lot better ways in our community than trying to have our public records reviewed. So, we'd certainly be willing to work with the manager's office if you are considering some public records work at the state legislature to see if there's some reform that could be done. And with that...
I think there's only one more thing, and that is snow removal as we start to hit the winter season. I'm sure you hear a lot from us about the snow removal, and the more that we can start to get some work on the pathways, the better, given that at our town center, a lot of people are walking around and maneuvering that way than trying to drive through the ice and snow. So, those are our things, and we appreciate all of your time and willing to work with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate the overview. This is great, and we haven't actually been able to get presentations from our GID, and all of our GIDs, which we have multiple in the county. And Vice Chair Herman actually asked for this, and so, Vice Chair Herman, do you want to start? Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for asking for it, and we'll have more GIDs, I know, coming to us, so we can hear about what they're doing and how we can support them. And Commissioner Garcia?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your time and your patience. I want to preface my question with just, please forgive my ignorance. I'm operating from my knowledge and awareness of the Sun Valley General Improvement District. As you know, they do water, sewer, trash, they have parks as well. And, but we don't have recreation passes, and we don't have punch cards. And so, I was on your website, trying to familiarize myself with who and who does not have access. I said on the Parks Commission, it's really important to me that all constituents of all backgrounds and ages have access to these amenities that we so desire in our community. And in your comments, when you were describing, you know, the two branches, you do community service and you do the beach fee, you said certain people have access. So, on your website, I'm looking at specifically the renters and tenants. There seems to be a form, a PDF, that's available for people who are tenants to fill out with the authorization from their landlord. So, if I'm a landlord, I have a two-bedroom home that I'm renting, I have the choice on whether or not I can issue a recreation pass. Is that the correct?
Yes. All of our facilities, other than our beaches, are public facilities, so anyone can utilize them. There are discounts that are given, and that's part of what is happening with that facility fee. So, there's a discount if you are a resident of Incline with that picture pass. Landlords can decide whether or not they will give their tenant that picture pass, since they are the one paying the true fee to, the landlord, in theory, is paying the true fee to be there. The only one that that does, the picture pass you need in order to get access is our beaches. Our beaches are deed restricted, and so, because they are deed restricted, there is very specific language that says exactly how, who has access to the beaches. The residents own it. We just administer what goes on at the beaches, and so, the residents have to decide who their guests are and who can have that access. And so, that's a deed restriction.
And when did that deed restriction begin?
1968.
When your GID was established.
Right after it was founded. So, they, it was originally founded, the GID, and then they acquired the beaches a couple of years later, and some properties bought into the beach access and others did not. And so, that's how it's been deeded.
Okay. You know, and I'm not picking on you, because you're here, and thank you for your service, and thank you for coming to the community to serve in this role. It just feels very strange to me that we would have an amenity that isn't available to our public, and you're saying that the parks, the hunting, the ski resort, the golf course are all open, and the restriction is only on our beaches?
It's on the, because it's deed restricted land. So, it's a little bit different than like your public amenity.
Okay. Has there ever been appetite or discussion about redoing that?
I don't think there's much appetite. People are very, I think, are very protective over that. People are very, I think are very protective over that deed.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the parcel owners that all live in Incline have access to it. It's just not the general public because of the deed restriction. And so, that's, it's been very important to us to make sure that, to our community, that we preserve that private access to our beaches. It is the general public, but you have to be a parcel holder to have that preliminary access.
Okay. Well, you know, for the people that are in our service industry that are feeding us and serving us and waiting on us and cleaning our rooms, to not have access to a public amenity like that is a little bit of a hard pill for me to swallow, but I'll just leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andrela?
Thanks. Thanks for coming, and I too, well, just for full transparency, say that I am not aware of all the details to which you operate, but I do have a question, and also, and thank you in terms of working with Treasurer Taylor with the transposition of the fees. And I wanted to find out where are we at on that? Is that all squared away? Have you, you know, essentially reimbursed for the time, the overtime, you know, those things that made up that correction? And again, kudos to you recognizing that there was a hiccup, if you want to call it that, and that, you know, the staff with the treasurer's office immediately did what they could so that the residents would be informed, but I'm just wanting to make sure that we're completely all squared away and whole on that.
Yeah, so, thank you, and really appreciated his response by the treasurer and the staff. They did turn that around. We had an unfortunate transposition error between our two fees. We've received a bill. We had a conversation around the variance between the overtime costs with staff versus straight time costs. I believe it's been processed. We're paying for all the out-of-pocket expenses, plus the overtime costs affiliated with your staff to redo the work.
Oh, that's great. And then, any of those time allocations, because they were taken off of the work that they would be normally doing in order to put in the rush and accommodating, so that invoice has been processed as well? I don't know what that classification would be, but...
Yeah, if I recall, the total cost was around $8,000 for the overtime cost, plus the out-of-pocket expenses.
And thanks for your cooperation in terms of just working through that. I do want to switch to your point, and I appreciate the treasurer and you and your leadership and the giving of your time, along with the board, having some of your board members, I think, and talk about what their experience is, is very helpful to what they bring to the board, right? Being on the PUC is a very regulatory, probably one of the most highly regulatory parts of anywhere in the state of Nevada. So, and the expertise that you bring as the chair, having a financial background, are you a CPA?
I'm not.
Okay. But you have a financial background, and certainly the treasurer and their role. But I wonder, in terms of just transparency with some of the maybe misunderstanding or perceptions in putting the financial audit, that would be available, because you are a public entity, and maybe, and I'm just going to kind of segue to your point about public records. Sometimes I think the more that we can offer transparency, and I'm not saying it's not being offered, I'm not inferring that at all, but I think the more that you can have that audit up on the website, available for everyone. Is it available now?
Yes.
Yeah, great. And I think it might be helpful if the chair agrees, this is her district, and I think it would be helpful to, if you wanted to come back and talk about the financial component, because I do think, to Commissioner Garcia's point on some of where these unique, the framework of the uniqueness of IFGID might help in even having, where does the money all go? How does it all work? Some of those unique expenditures, how you've seen those expenditures, but also, I think, to your point, Madam Chair of IFGID, when you mentioned that you literally were very, very committed to talking about some of the things that happen and where you're at in terms of being on the watch, but having the audit and having those controls that are still being followed, and I think it would be helpful if the chair feels it's helpful to look at having you come back and maybe give everybody a snapshot of what that looks like. I think that might help, because a lot of times, I don't know about you, but looking through government websites isn't always so easy to navigate, and I think that even allowing the residents that that's available to them and being, you know, kind of getting in front of that opportunity for them to look, and them to know, oh, it's there. And I think sometimes on public records requests, it's really important that we provide that because it is a public entity, but I do think the more information we can give as our commitment to transparency, the more that information and questions will be better targeted for a response, if that makes sense.
That makes a ton of sense, and I think something we can, if Chair Hill decides that that is a route she'd like to go, we can definitely bring down our financial director and also use it as a way to navigate the website to show where a lot of that is found, because as you've mentioned, navigating government websites and then pulling the correct records is not the world's easiest task. So, we can definitely run it that way and walk through kind of all of the fees. We also have been trying to host, we held one about a month ago, a town hall, to show all of the capital work that we're doing.
Oh, great.
As well as how the fee has fluctuated and why, so that we can make sure that we get feedback from our community and ensure that they are knowing what we're spending money on, and what the cost of those are, and if that fits their needs and wants.
Thanks. One last question.
Yes, yeah.
The, does the statute, you cited a couple statutes, but does any of the statutes or the current policies, does it actually outline what level of audit you have? Because there obviously is different levels of auditing.
Well, we're, so we're a public agency. We are, just like any other public agency, we get audited. We do get audited, the Center for CLGF, through the Department of Taxation. We've been meeting with them on a regular basis. As a matter of fact, we'll be back on Thursday to give an update. And I think, you know, we believe in full transparency, appreciate you mentioning that. We think there's a little difference between abuse versus full transparency, that you, every democracy needs to function effectively for the public. But yeah, we'd be happy to come back and share our finances with the county and where we're at.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate it. I just think it's important to share the highest level of responsibility for the audit and how that's outlined. Not everyone understands that. There are different levels of auditing, but a government entity is having the highest level of auditing that one would anticipate and expect, right? And then, you know, I really think that your commitment to your transparency and what you're trying to do, I really want to thank you, because it wasn't in your slide, and the fact that you brought that up is really, is really important, that you really wanted to address the way it is. And to also own that, yes, there were some things, as I mentioned, and you mentioned, and that the taxation, that you're working through that. When do you anticipate being off of what I'll call the watch list?
Well, it's probably going to take at least a year.
Okay.
One of those requirements was getting an auditor in place, which we had some challenges with, given the lack of ability to produce an audit two years ago. We did get one in place. They're already working with us. They're one of the top 15 in terms of size, audit firms in the country. And what we did was a one-year kind of self-imposed time and materials audit with them, because we wanted to show them we've actually improved. We spent a lot of time the last seven months unwinding some of the work that went into a really bad ERP, financial transition, and we've done that. They've already started some of the audit work, but because we were so late, we couldn't get, we couldn't meet the statutory deadline for next year with that audit, but this upcoming year, we will, they're going to roll us into their timelines, and we should have no problem meeting the statutory audit requirements.
Thanks, and thanks for recognizing that you really need to do what needs to be done.
Yes.
So, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
We've heard a lot from citizens that showed up this morning, drove down from the area, and wanted to have some things on the record. And one of the allegations was they have no control over what takes place, they have no ability to challenge anything. Can you walk us through how you're elected to the board chair? How does that work? I don't, none of us live in Incline, so we're not, even though the chair is, that's in our district, but none of us live up there, and we're not, I don't know how, I think I know how it's happening, but I'd like to get it on the record. I think you have an election up there, and you're all elected officials. So, if somebody's really unhappy with what's taking place, somebody could support another candidate, or somebody could run for office themselves and try and fix it. So, can you walk us through that real quick?
So, we are part of the irregular election cycle, so three of us were just elected in this last November, and then we serve a four-year term. And then, in the middle of that four-year term, every two years, there's another election. So, in what we would think of like as our midterm elections, two new people will be up for election.
So, what's the total number of members on the board?
There's five of us.
Five, so it's similar to what we have here.
Yep.
Okay, very good. And I just wanted to get it out on the record, when some folks say that we've got no recourse, we can't do anything, well, they can vote if they so choose.
I just wanted to add as well, 100%, and we just had an election, and frankly, I think the performance of the district, because it was a majority, it was three seats that got elected, was really on the ballot, and the three incoming trustees that got elected with 75% of the vote, which all the elected officials I've ever worked with over the years, that's not even close to a landslide. It's beyond that. So, I think the community really reflected, as you said, bringing that accountability to our local government by the fact that that 75% election result turned out the way it did.
True, true. So, you've only been there, sir, Mr. Harrison, seven months, so you've kind of jumped right into the fire, didn't you? It sounds like. It sounds like there's a lot of unhappy folks. I've been hearing about this for years. We heard a public speaker and acknowledged by our representative from the district attorney's offices, 13, 15 years of this going on. I understand that there's a resident up there who wrote a book about this, been recently published. I mean, this is, this is, there's a lot of unhappy people up there, and I think it's incumbent upon your board and your staff to try and make these folks, your neighbors, happy with what's going on up there. I mean, there's a lot of unhappy folks, and it isn't, it just didn't happen overnight. This is ongoing since, who knows when, since the inception, maybe. I don't know. I don't live up there, but there's some unhappy folks, and it seems that the question of financing is, finances is always the issue. Audits, and we need this, and the state of Nevada is looking into your finances and your, this watch list. This doesn't sound good. This doesn't sound appealing to the public. It's up to you to figure out how to get these folks on your team. They're your neighbors. I also liked what Commissioner Garcia brought up about the access for everybody. I mean, it doesn't rub me the right way either, I got to tell you. Maybe, maybe somebody might get on some floaties and float in and come in from the water and land on your beach and hang around and leave after they're done. But, I mean, the whole idea of exclusion is, just doesn't rub us the right way when it's a state resource. Audits, how many audits are available? Can we go back to 2000, to 1965 and look at the finances forward? Do you have records of all that, if somebody wanted to see that? I don't want to see it, but somebody might want to see that. I mean, again, you've inherited, you're new to the board, you're new to the position. Whatever happened before you, happened before you, and to Commissioner Androla's point, transparency, get yourself off the hook. If somebody else did something wrong, don't try and shield them, you know? That needs to be brought out, and that's the best way to root it out, is let people know what you're doing is the right thing, and what happened before, that was then, and this is now, and take it from there. That's my suggestion to you. Tell me about this 900 acres that somebody bought in Carson City. Is that over by, by the prison off like Fifth Street? Is that where that basin is? Where is that?
It's over by.
I can, yeah. It's a little bit closer towards, you know, Johnson Lane area.
Okay.
Yeah, so it goes down through the golf course in Clear Creek, and then ends up, there's a wetlands there.
Okay.
And so, they do duck hunting, and I think it's three times a week during the season. And then, you can sign up, if you're an IFGID resident, there's a discount, and then anyone in the area can use it.
Sure, sure. So, I know, I'm familiar with that area.
Yeah.
But I also saw the holding facility, holding tanks over like Fifth Street by the old prison. There's some, there's a water treatment plant there as well.
I don't think those are our waters. Those aren't ours.
Not sure, just inquiring.
Yep, no. And then, we just redid, we finished our pipeline, because we had to bring all of our wastewater down, and so, we just finished that about a couple of weeks ago.
So, are those lined ponds out there? Are they ponds? Is that what you're discharging to? There's no chance of that escaping into the Carson River, is there?
That's clean water, that's treated water that is down there. We have a water treatment plant that is up at the district.
Okay.
And then, we funnel that water down through pipes.
Okay, very well.
And it's used a lot of times by the golf course and other ranches on its way down.
Okay, very good. And then, lastly, Mr. Harrison, could you tell us a little bit more about what you were referring to about public record reforms? What was that? Maybe?
Sure.
Tell us a little bit more about that.
Yeah, we appreciate your advice that you provided on transparency. We are also true believers in that. The best government is the one that's open. It's how you build trust, is by being able to be transparent with all the documents that we have. We have all those audits all the way back. We get, we probably add about 85, I think, or so, public records requests for the year. Some are easy, and we're able to turn around quickly. Some of them are not so much requests for records as requests for data, and in many ways, we don't give a response back to say, I'm sorry, that's not a record. We'll go ahead and produce the data that they're looking for. And then, lastly, is the stuff that what I would call abusive. And so, the individual you just mentioned who wrote a book, is the same individual who has that $40,000 records request out towards us, and it costs a lot of money to comply with the law, and we have a very small staff. So, we will, we have a clerk dedicated full-time to doing records. We also have our administrative services director who oversees some of that work and does it as well. But our goal is always transparency, to turn those things around as quickly as possible, but when you've got some of these things, you know, $40,000 for us is a lot of money.
Sure. I just want to go on the record, I'm all about public records. The taxpayers pay for the compiling and the holding of these records. The citizens have every right to see that, and when anybody wants to restrict that in any way, I feel, especially any bureaucratic-type person who wants to restrict public records, it gets abused. Not to say that you would abuse it, but lots of bureaucrats do abuse it. So, again, if you want to lean towards transparency, public records distribution should be available. And, you know, maybe if it costs $40,000 or $80,000 to compile that, maybe you should look at your storage, the way you store records, and maybe invest in ways to make them easily retrievable, so it doesn't cost that much. That's my point.
That's a good, again, some good advice. That's not the problem. The problem is the requirement to review that by our legal team for redactions, and so, that's where the big money comes from. We've got, we've got the systems in place to be able to respond to records requests. We completely redid our website last year to make it easier for people to get records. It's just that, it's that redaction piece that's required under the law that we can't even recover for. So, you know, in this case, we did ask if, it's not that we don't want to give the records, we just asked for a little bit more definition, instead of every, you know, every single document affiliated with it.
True.
But she's welcome to it. It's just going to cost us a lot of money, and as we look at opportunity costs, that $40,000 could be invested in a lot better ways.
Yeah, well, we can agree to disagree, because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's the same problem that I get here when I try and get public records, and I'm an elected, and I've got to file for public records, and I've been told not recently, but not that long ago, I'd have to wait eight or nine months to get some records. So, I know how frustrating it is to be on the asking side as well, so there's two sides of that coin.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate you explaining how IFGID works, and we look forward to continuing the dialogue. I know that just to piggyback off what Commissioner Garcia was asking, I know that there used to be a public swim day for all the kids in Incline, regardless of whether they were residents or not, and I don't know if you're looking to bring that back, but I... but I know that that had to even be moved to Sand Harbor because the community, the kids in the community who are renting can't participate. And so anyway, I also have, you know, concerns with community members who are working and living in the community and can't access all of the amenities. But I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, so we had our legal counsel review that area as one of the areas. It was a swim safety day that was put on by Northlake Tahoe Fire Protection District. And so that has been reinstated to ensure that we are able to do that. The other thing is, we used to have employee beach access at our beaches. The prior board had removed that due to fear of breaking the deed. We've had some legal work around it and we've now asked our residents to sponsor those people as their guests to then go where the employee will go and pay what the fee is, but they will get access through that.
Okay, well, thank you for that, thank you for your work on trying to be more inclusive. And we'll chat soon, I'm sure, on other issues. I see, Commissioner Clark, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just one comment, if you have a public swim day, is that, is that happening now? You alluded to that, that it used to happen for the community, do you still do that?
It wasn't a public swim day, it was a water safety. And it was put on by Northlake Tahoe Fire Protection District. And so in the past, it had always been at our beaches. About three or four years ago, it got moved to Sand Harbor because of what Chair Hill had alluded to. And the prior board, we have then sought legal counsel to ensure that it could go back in.
So is it going to go back in?
Yeah, it was held this way.
Because I've got some other suggestions too. We might have county employee swim day and we might have commissioner swim day and fire department swim day and the sheriff's swim day. There's all kinds of opportunities to engage the rest of the county. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you both. Have a wonderful rest of your day and we'll chat soon, let us know.
Mr. Harrison, over here. You had asked us to distribute a document to the commissioners to be placed on record. Did you want to speak about that?
I think, okay, I think you already have these. But what it is essentially is our history of our facility and recreation fees. We do have two, so the individuals who live in Crystal Bay don't have access to our beaches in Incline. So they don't get charged that annual beach facility fee, whereas all the other residents do. And so what you have here in two columns, first column is what everyone in Incline pays. The second column is without the beach fee for those individuals who live in Crystal Bay. So thank you, just wanted to show there's a lot of, a lot of history of that. And until just the last few years, there wasn't as much fluctuation as what you heard in that fee. It was pretty consistently at that $830, if I remember right. Yeah, and so just wanted to just give you a little more data, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I wanted to say one more thing. We are working on the e-bike situation. Please, let's continue to put our heads together. The team at CSD has been doing a lot of work on that front. And so let us know what we can do on more, you know, to support you with that. And the other parking, that's constantly a conversation we're having with the sheriff's office. But I will follow up with that. And then snow removal for pathways, we bought a little pathway snow removal machine. It broke down numerous times through the season. Then we were begging for other Placer County or, you know, other counties to borrow theirs. They were broken down, we are trying so hard. We also want to work in partnership a bit more with the private companies who are doing snow removal and then moving their snow on our pathways. So I think there's probably more work we could do on that front. So let's collaborate on that piece, so again, thank you.
We appreciate it. We, you know, as a district, we don't have police powers. So we are relying on the county to put those in place. So thank you again for working with us on that.
Thank you, have a great rest of your day. Okay, now we're going to move into our consent items. Do we have any changes to consent, Manager Thomas? Okay, any board members have questions or anything they want to pull on consent? I'm not seeing anything. I do see we have a public commenter signed in, Madam Clerk.
Tracy Thomas.
Thank you, I just wanted to comment on the, I'm sorry, can I get the overhead, please? The 7E1, and I apologize, I had originally had these exhibits for item 13, which was pulled. But in regards to the training for the impaired driver, there's a program that the employees get to volunteer and be the guinea pigs for this, to be the impaired drivers for the candidates in the academy to test their skills in dealing with those situations. And that all happens right back here in this parking lot, I mean, in this building. They help get us impaired and then we go out into this parking lot. We do not drive any vehicles, so don't worry, but they have us sit in the vehicle so they can do their little exercise in getting us out and everything. But I just wanted to point out the impact this facility plays in so many programs up at the sheriff's department, so many programs at the fire academies and stuff. And so this easement that's going straight through the middle is going to impact that stuff. And so when this item comes back to the board, I'd like you to give some, maybe even do a tour of the facility yourself so you can kind of see what they do and everything. I've never heard of an easement going through the middle of a piece of property. You know, I don't know why it's not going on the edge or going a shorter distance up to Sage Hen. But anyway, I mean, and this EOC center is also full of lots of vehicles and personnel when there is an event that occurs. So this would, if there's an event and this is supposed to be the secondary, that's not the place you want people coming out. Because it's going to be already populated with agencies in our community trying to deal with this situation. But anyway, so yeah, I appreciate all of the programs that the sheriff's office has and the fire departments have to do the community outreach and to be better trained and make better efforts in those challenges of our community. And if you want to see a better photo of that area, here's the cliff they want to put that easement on. And then here's the nice, smooth, gradual thing out to Sage Hen. This is a Zillow listing I got the picture off of. So anyway, I thank you.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in?
Okay, if no other commissioners have comments or want to pull anything, I'm looking for a motion on the consent, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. And Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block vote for us?
And it is a motion also. Eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Thank you, and as a note, we have pulled item 13 for a future agenda item. And Commissioner Andriola, do you mind doing the second?
I don't mind, but I do if I, when the time is right.
That's what I was going to give you, right after that, if you want to make a note about item 11. Okay, Commissioner Andriola, you've worked so hard on item 11. I wanted to give you your due on it finally coming to the board, so please go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It's really far beyond my commitment to the Golden Eagle Regional Park. It's really to Assistant County Manager Dave Solera, the leadership of the interim county manager. And to be honest with you, this has been going on and to the sheriff's office, to the City of Sparks, to tribal communities, to the US Forest Service, to the Bureau of Land Management. Everyone is working together to make this a safe, safe place. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone's recognized for their hard work, cooperation. And we are, we're moving through some things and that is to come maybe at a later date. But this is really a great opportunity to have everyone be recognized for the hard work. We're talking several years of hard work on this. So I know that there's a lot of activity that sometimes gets raised in the community about having a designated shooting facility. But the fact is, is that this is going to help. And all the jurisdictions are working hard together to even look at, you know, future solutions. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And thank you, Vice Chair, for making the motion. And as I said, I'll make the second, so I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say. Oh wait, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on the block vote? I apologize.
We have nobody signed in.
Okay, thank you, I didn't see anything, but I forgot to ask. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We're now moving into item 14, Manager Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if you'll bear with me, this is a long item that I will read into the record. So this is a recommendation to, one, approve a new fiscal year 26 capital improvement project, which is the Washoe County Special Operations Division hanger, approved by the Capital Improvement Project Committee, September 3, 2025. And two, accept the hanger sale agreement dated September 18, 2025, between the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, which is the seller, and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, the buyer, for the purchase of the permanent structure known as Hanger 5, which is approximately 39,600 square feet at the Sted Airport in the amount of $1.75 million. Three, accept the non-commercial ground lease at Reno Sted Airport for a proposed 50-year ground lease agreement with the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority for a 2.12 plus or minus acre site, which would allow the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to use the premises for the purpose of housing Hanger 5 for Raven operations, secure storage, special operations assets, a controlled environment for rapid deployment, training, and general office-related activities for the proposed lease period of October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2075, at $29,100 per year received as a mutually agreeable Incline service provided by the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, to be negotiated annually at an equal or greater than the rent value. And four, accept a direct grant award of $1.5 million with no match required from the William and Pennington Foundation to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, through the Washoe County Honorary Deputies Association for the purchase of Hanger 5 from the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority from the grant dated June 10, 2025. And if approved, direct finance to make the necessary net zero cross-functional budget appropriation transfer and the budget amendments, which has a net impact to the general fund of $0.
Thank you so much. And I know that this item has been a long time coming. Do you have any additional comments or should we bring up the sheriff?
We could welcome the sheriff to make any comments that he'd like.
Yes, come on down.
I don't want to speak on his behalf, but thank you.
Good morning, Sheriff Bland, for the record, and I have Under Sheriff Cory Solferino here. So this has been a very long process. We've been working on this for almost two years. And the goal is, as you know, we have four aviation helicopters. And our current hanger that we've had for many, many years is too small. And so this opportunity arose and the Pennington Foundation was kind enough to give us the grant. And so not only will this house our aviation, but our bomb squad, our regional bomb squad, our SWAT assets, and hopefully a mobile command post if appropriations come through that we will be getting here in the near future, as well as all of our search and rescue assets. So that is our special operations, there's offices there that will house our search and rescue, which is currently at an old house on Longley by Rhodes. They will come over, along with our regional bomb team will come over and our aviation unit. So all of our special operations will be in one building, ready to respond to any critical events instead of some over at Longley, some at the sheriff's office, some in Panther Valley, some down south, some over at Reno, some over at Sparks, it'll be all in one area. So we want to thank the Pennington Foundation for all that.
Yes, incredible work, Sheriff. And yes, we're so lucky to have such a generous community behind us. And so I look to the board to see if there's any board questions, Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just remembering the last time we talked about hangars. And that was just a small thing, that was just the hanger door, remember that?
Yep.
Okay, so and here we are, success.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Andriola, Commissioner Clark?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, well, congratulations. Again, thank you to the Pennington Foundation. We're so grateful to have them as a partner. And we appreciate your dedication, Sheriff, to finding these partners. So we don't have these hits to our budget when, as you know, we're running deficits and not able to expand all of these capital needs. But you were creative and resilient and kept on pushing, so thank you so much for that. And just, I received yet another email of a concern about ICE operations out of this hanger. You had emailed me last night, no, there is no ICE operations out of this hanger, but I just wanted to get this on the record so community members could hear it also during the public comment or during this hearing.
Absolutely, so yeah, thank you, there will be no ICE operations out of this. This is all of our special operation equipment that'll be housed there.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay, I am looking for a motion on this item, Commissioner Andriola.
It's presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen.
Vice Chair Herman?
Oh, it's just not working. Are you an aye, Vice Chair Herman? Are you an aye? Okay. That motion passes unanimously, that is so exciting, congratulations again. We're now going to move into our final public comment, Manager Thomas.
Your final public comment is to be heard and limited to three minutes per person. It may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers and comments are pleased to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
First up is Tracy Thomas, followed by Nicholas St. John.
I wanted to remind this body of Executive Order 14287, which is protecting American communities from criminal aliens. It was created to protect the sovereignty of our nation as well as the safety of our citizens from international cartels and other transnational criminal organizations along the southern border, as well as terrorists and other malign actors who intend to harm the United States and the American people. Anyone who violated our immigration laws to enter this country has committed a crime, period. Does it suck that cartels take advantage of the weakness in the enforcement of our laws? Yes. But condoning it and encouraging it to continue is not the answer. It only encourages the cartels and terrorists to exploit citizens of other nations and their families through coercion and threat to their families if they don't comply. I have talked to those in the construction industry where the builder contracts with one person who is responsible for assembling his own crew. Unfortunately, that person, the hefe, is under control of the cartels and is required to pay them and use the criminals they sneak into the country undocumented and unaccounted for by our country. The only way to stop the cartels from victimizing their own people is to stop the cartels from getting away with it. The blue political extremists making public comment from the scripts they are paid to make are only protecting the cartels, not the person being deported. Their purpose is to amp up fake propaganda and set targets on our law enforcement that are merely enforcing our laws. Their goal is division and not unity. We must cease any and all policies and practices favoring aliens over any groups of American citizens. The only person being kidnapped or disappeared in the U.S. are those being trafficked for pedophiles and organ harvesting. This is a real issue and Reno is the major hub. People hijacking these terms in an effort to desensitize us to the reality of just how large these pedophile rings are do not truly care about human beings or their welping. I encourage you to educate yourself on the seriousness of the pedophile epidemic at the variety of sources, awakenjustice.org, which is our own Reno organization, ourrescue.org, and then the timtebowfoundation.org and many, many others. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Nicholas St. John signed in, but I do not see him in chambers. Brian Grant?
Brian Grant, nephew of Thomas Purdy murdered by Washoe County sheriffs. My uncle Thomas Purdy was a father of two. He came to Reno for a vacation, stayed at the Pepper Mill. Instead of flying home in the plane, he flew under the plane in a body bag. And he died because of the negligence of the sheriff's office and the deputies he decides to hire. They chose property over his life. They chose the hog tie. Instead of cutting the hog tie, they had four 240-pound deputies get on his back and smother him. And then, I don't think she's here anymore, but the medical examiner? No, excited delirium, makes total sense. They still defend the actions that they took that day, even though he was hog tied. How is he going to fight in a hog tie? He can't fight in a hog. He can't fight in a hog tie. His hands are behind his back, his legs are behind his back. What can he do? They said he kicked. How can you kick when your legs are restrained? Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. That's just one tragedy out of three that have happened just in that specific type of situation, which doesn't make sense to me. How do you have one death and then two follow it in the same exact order of what they did? That's a pattern in practice. That's not change. And they're going to do it again, I guarantee it. It's going to come to this port again. They're going to do it again. And then Bala, under his eight years as sheriff, did he have one under his eight years?
There's been 16 people.
Oh, 16 died under his care. This is, again, this is bigger than one tragedy. The Washoe Sheriff's Office has failed multiple times under Bala's leadership in the past eight years. There have been multiple deaths. The sheriff has shown no accountability. Instead, he promoted the officers involved. One of them was here. He killed Nico Smith. What was his name?
Cory Solferino.
Cory Solferino, yeah. He was involved in Nico Smith's death. And they promoted Paul Hubble. He killed Thomas.
And Justin.
And jumps, Justin Thompson. And he took his rifle and smashed another community member's face in.
Handcuffed community member.
Oh, handcuffed, no less. Right before the election, Bala took two $5,000 campaign donations and then recommended the very medical vendor that was involved in my uncle's death. Despite this, the county commissioners renewed that vendor's contract for millions, even though multiple deaths occurred under their watch. It's clear that this was about protecting their image and not about justice or accountability. The county commissioners can be concerned with the optics over the Burning Man incident, but they need to look at law enforcement's own negligence in this county. My family doesn't need a conversation with Sheriff Bala. We've seen all we need to know.
Thank you.
We have nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into item 16. Manager Thomas.
Thank you. Item 16 is your Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us?
I'll just remind everyone, our meeting on the 23rd of this month that was canceled. So our next meeting of this board will be on October the 14th. And then just a quick follow-up item. Madam Chair, you had asked about the library board of trustees. They should be finalizing their recommendation for their fiscal year 27 budget to the, that would be presented to the board. They're doing that on October 15th, and then that would then come back before the board in November.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our county manager here. We talked shortly, briefly, about having the fire chief come to our meetings and speak to us about things that are happening at the fire department, especially during the, this time of year when we have a lot of fires. So, and to keep reminding us, the public, you know, that we can prevent fires and that sort of thing.